Okay, maybe you wanna pull up the PowerPoint? And share the screen so that we can look a little bit more formal that we're starting a meeting.
I think Sarah's live. We're on the air.
Sarah, can you pull up the PowerPoint for tonight? Or do you, would you like staff to do that?
Lisa, you're supposed to do the PowerPoint.
And I'm sorry, are we broadcasting now?
Yes, we're broadcasting.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. To adhere to the San Mateo County Health Officers' March 16th, 2020 Shelter in Place Order, this Planning Commission meeting will be held via teleconference. In accordance with Governor Newsom's Executive Order N29-20, there will not be a physical location from which the public may attend this meeting. However, the public will have access to remotely observe this meeting and address the commission. This meeting will be streamed live on the city's meeting web portal, which can be found at www.sancarlos.com and on Comcast Channel 27 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. We start each meeting with the Planning Commission with a pledge allegiance to our flag and great country. I invite everyone to join us now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you and welcome, everyone. Lisa, can we please have the Commissioner roll call?
This is Andrea Martis, Principal Planner. I'll be doing a roll call this evening.
Oh, thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley? Vice Chair Capone?
Jim, I believe you're muted right now.
He said he can't unmute.
Oh, here, let me see if...
I was reading lips.
Present.
Great. And Chair Dugan?
I'm here, but I would like to pause. I believe Commissioner Bradley is intending to call into this meeting. And was he in attendance at the RDRC just prior?
He was, and he is going to attend. I think he maybe just joined Commissioner Bradley. Yes, great.
I said the Pledge of Allegiance.
Terrific.
Carry on, sir.
Great. Welcome, Don. Glad you could join us and as always, appreciate your endurance coming out of the RDRC meeting.
We went till about four minutes till seven with the RDRC meeting, but we finished up.
Terrific. Well, we're all present and accounted for, so thank you, Commissioners. We will move on to public comment. We will open up the floor now for general public comment on any items not on tonight's agenda. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Public comments will be received by telephone this evening prior. If you would like to participate in public comment, please call into 1-669-900-9128. Meeting ID 238262027. We'll pause for a minute to see if anyone would like public comment on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. So we will take a minute. And Andrea, well, are you receiving the calls this evening?
Sarah Caddona is. She's in chambers and monitoring them.
Got it. All right.
We have one caller ending in 031.
Okay, I recognize the caller ending in 031 to speak on public comment.
Hi, this is Byron Hill. I live in the White Oaks neighborhood since 2013. I've read through all of the documentation for the proposed ADU and JADU ordinance, and I can tell a lot of thought was put into it, so thank you for that. My comment tonight for the committee is around exceptions to the general rules. I'd like to see consideration.
And I'm sorry, sir, if I could just pause you. We absolutely welcome your comment, but this is a public comment period, which is for items not on tonight's agenda. So it sounds like you're wanting to comment on our proposed amendment to the zoning this evening?
Yeah, well, yes, I guess I was just gonna recommend consideration be given for when exceptions may be made to those ordinances, in particular when the adjacent property is not a single-family residence.
I see. I appreciate that. I would just ask you to stand by and call back in to comment where we're on that agenda item, because then we could actually respond to you. We cannot actually respond to comments we receive in public comment. We have to actually be on that agenda item to properly receive your thoughts there. So if that's okay, you know, we will move on with the meeting and invite you to call back in when we're on that agenda item.
Understood, yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, do we have anyone else calling in for public comment on items not on tonight's agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay. Very good. We will move on to approval of the minutes of our previous Planning Commission meeting of April 20th, 2020. And Lisa, I know you were perhaps tied up. I had submitted a few minor kind of grammatical and clarification changes to the minutes. Did those come through on your end?
Yes, Chair Dugan, I am in receipt of those. And if you would like, either you or I can read those for the rest of the commission, but there were just a couple of grammatical, I believe, modifications that you recommended and some clarification.
Sure, I'll just buzz through them very quickly. There's nothing controversial, but just so it's in the record. So on page two of the minutes, which is packet page four, my comment towards the bottom, it mentions 54 parking spaces in my question, and I was actually talking about bicycle parking spaces, so I wanted that to say 54 bicycle parking spaces, to be clear. On packet page six, there's this, at the very top, it should say "he" instead of "hi." I think that was a typographical error. And on packet page seven, just clarifying in my comment, Commissioner Dugan also asked the applicant why they need an extra 2.5 feet in height. The sentence there just didn't make a lot of sense. And the only perhaps substantive comment is on packet page nine, my comment. I'll just read it in the entirety. Commissioner Dugan stated that the commission might have to relook at what natural state is in the code, what natural state is in the code, and implementing rules and regulations to keep our city safe. I wanted to add to that, given the danger of wildfires, because I believe that is what I was talking about at that time. So minor changes, but I thought they were worth mentioning. Did anyone have any additional comments to those minutes or any questions about my clarifications?
No. So I'll move that we approve the minutes as read with those minor changes put in place.
I'll second that.
Terrific. Andrea, could we have a roll call on that, please?
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Capone?
Jim, he did not come through again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Chair Dugan?
Yes. So the minutes of the last meeting are approved, which brings us to Agenda Item 6, our public hearing. We have one matter before us this evening. First, and that regards our proposed amendment to our municipal code involving accessory dwelling units. And for this matter, our planning staff will review the proposed amendments and give us their recommendation, and then we will open it up for public comment at that time, and then finally we'll deliberate as a commission and make a decision. Staff, do you have a report for us on Item 6A?
Yes, good evening, Chair Dugan and Commissioners. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager, I'll be giving the presentation to the commission this evening. The item before you is an amendment to the zoning ordinance concerning accessory dwelling units and also junior accessory dwelling units for consistency with state law. In addition to the primary amendment to the zoning ordinance concerning ADUs, I'll be using the acronyms ADU and JDU, JADU, to speak about the accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units this evening. But in addition to the ADU and JDU, JADU, excuse me, I'm not used to this one. This one's a little bit new. We'll talk about that. But in addition to these, these primary amendments, we also are proposing amendments to other sections of the zoning ordinance for clarification, consistency, and implementation of these requirements. So the recommended action before the commission this evening is to adopt a resolution to recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance to fully replace San Carlos Municipal Code Section 1823-210, second dwelling units, to ensure compliance with state law regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and also accompanying amendments to the following sections of the code. Section 1804 Residential Districts, 1805 Mixed Use, 1815 General Site Regulations, 1816 Affordable Housing, 1819 Non-Conforming, 1820 Parking and Loading, 1824.230, the wireless definitions, and then 1840 Land Use Classifications. And although these seem like quite a few additional amendments, I will say most of them have to do with the legal requirement to rename second dwelling units to accessory dwelling units. So wherever there is a second dwelling unit mentioned in the code, that needed to be replaced by accessory dwelling unit so that there's internal consistency in the zoning ordinance. So a majority of these sections really got caught in that net to ensure consistency. And then the parking section needed to be clarified because there are parking limitations that we can enforce pursuant to state law, as well as clarifying what it really is to be an ADU or a JDU in the land use classifications. And then, and then lastly, to clarify where ADUs and JDUs are permitted in the residential zoning districts that are currently in place in San Carlos. So if you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to go through those. So in somewhat of a follow-up to the commission's previous discussion, which was held back in October of last year, I just wanted to clarify, in case, you know, new members of the public or we have additional audience members that are new to this presentation, just to clarify, what do we mean by an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit? Well, they can take different forms, and I know you've heard this before, but just to clarify, an ADU can be attached from the primary structure. It can be attached to a primary structure. And when I say "structure," that could be a single-family home, and pursuant to new state laws that were passed, that could also be a multifamily or mixed-use building. So either attached or attached to those structures. It can take the form of somewhat like adaptive reuse, where a building is repurposed, where it's, say presently, a garage, and then it's repurposed to become an ADU. So whether it's an accessory structure or an existing garage, those can be modified in order to accommodate an ADU or a portion of a JDU. And then a junior accessory dwelling unit was something that was discussed with the commission last October, whereby it is somewhat of a smaller ADU. The state has gone on to define that that cannot be larger than 500 square feet, and it is typically part of an existing primary residence. And these are really limited to the single-family districts. So for example, where ADUs are, per state law, allowed to be in anywhere, in any zoning district that allows residential JDUs specifically, specifically are focused and accompanied within a single-family district only. So it's smaller than an ADU. It's always within the primary unit, and we have some definitions that we can go over a little bit more clearly later on. So when we're talking about this ordinance this evening, where it's really to accommodate these types of living units within the city's existing fabric. So just to sort of kind of remind us where we left off and touch upon some of the things that the Planning Commission requested in October of last year, there were a number of different items that you requested of staff and that have since been completed and are provided for in the packet that you have before you. So one of the things that the commission had spoken of was really, what are we talking about in terms of, you know, cooking facilities, kitchen, sanitation facilities, et cetera, within an ADU or a JDU? So we had conversations with the building official. We had done some research with other codes, and we put together, and also looking at what the state law provides, we put together some definitions that really helped to clarify those, to make sure that this square footage includes the necessary items to really create what we're going to call an ADU and JDU. So that is in your packet, and it is provided in the land use classification section, and I'll go over those in just a little bit, so that the commission can really be clear and ask any questions they have about those definitions. The second thing that the commission wanted to know is to have staff sort of see what they can bring back in terms of a visual example. My understanding is that the commission was interested in sort of visually seeing some graphics that would depict a single-family house that was maxed out under our new maximum floor area standard in combination with an ADU. And those are provided to the commission in Packet Pages 217 to 239. There's quite a few scenarios there, but I think what the commission was really interested in understanding, well, what would this look like if somebody did max out their single-family home and also wanted to build an ADU? And what are the bulk and mass impacts of doing that? And just really quickly, and I'll touch upon this again, but it's important to understand that the state says that we cannot allow lot coverage to be a limiting factor. We cannot allow maximum floor area to be a limiting factor. And whenever there are cases where those two standards would present a potential limitation for an ADU, cities cannot say no to an ADU. But what we can do is say, okay, you can build an ADU, but it has to be a maximum of 800 square feet. So the state is requiring that cities say yes, but then sets forth some limits on how big that ADU can be. So we'll talk about that in a little bit, but I just wanted to clarify that. The commission also wanted to understand what were the new parking requirements. You might recall back in October, there were a set of new laws that had just been passed, and with any new law, it takes some, you know, some effort and some due diligence to understand what exactly the law is requiring. And since that time, staff has done the research, has collaborated with our local county-wide 21 elements group to help us work with the state employees and their department to understand what laws were actually meaning. So we had done some research and had gone to the Transportation and Circulation Commission since last October, and we defined what the differences were, and that's found in Packet Page 241. The commission also was concerned about, well, what do we do when we bump up against some limitations in the hillsides, recognizing that we do have a natural state requirement? And what if, say for example, the natural state was already, you know, a house was built whereby it was already within the boundaries or confines of what natural state would be required for the lot? Could an ADU be built? Well, the state, again, it's sort of like lot coverage and maximum floor area, where if you exceed the natural state, well, then you will be allowed to do an accessory dwelling unit. But again, that accessory dwelling unit can be no larger than 800 square feet per state law. The commission was also wondering if staff could do some research about affordability programs or just to see what sort of was in the current toolbox for encouraging ADUs that can be limited as affordable units. So staff did some research on that, and the description of those are really found, excuse me, are found within the staff report on Packet Page 216. And I'll talk about that too, but essentially, where the city is probably going to have more of an impact is to look at potential programs that could be part of the housing element, especially when it comes to some sort of financial assistance. But as far as a zoning incentive, there really aren't any. And if you have questions on that, I know Judy Raman did some research, and she is also here this evening to answer any questions you may have on that. Staff, as directed by the Planning Commission, did meet with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and the staff report for that and the minutes from that meeting are provided in the packet. And then the commission, at that time, we weren't really clear whether JDUs were also, if this was a type of an ADU that cities could decide whether or not they wanted to allow it or not. Well, the new state laws that went into effect earlier this year did, in fact, mandate that JDUs be allowed as well. So on a single-family residential lot, one can theoretically build an ADU and also have a JDU on site. So I am going to be going over probably what are the most frequently asked questions about the state law. And typically, it's broken down into how much can you build? The mass and bulk setbacks, height, what is the parking, and the overall size. I know those were big questions sort of last time, but with the new laws that were passed in the fall of last year, that became effective as of January this year, I wanted to kind of go over those with the commission. So as I just mentioned, that JDUs have to be allowed. They can be allowed in addition to the ADU. The ADUs in general, this is per state law, they have to be allowed in locations where residential uses are already permitted. So in our single-family residential zoning districts, that's traditionally where they have been developed and sort of somewhat expected to be seen. But where the state kind of went a little bit further is that they're saying that ADUs can also be allowed in existing multifamily developments and existing mixed-use zoning districts, where there may be some additional square footage in that building that is not utilized or could be repurposed to accommodate an ADU. So there are provisions to sort of get ADUs into the existing structures where they're presently allowed. And then, of course, if a planned development was adopted, where it's currently allowing residential uses, then ADUs could be allowed there as well. As I previously mentioned, lot coverage and maximum floor area are no longer impediments towards the construction of an ADU. The state has also passed laws to relax some of the requirements for owner occupancy. So in San Carlos, we have traditionally had a requirement where either the main house or the ADU needed to be owner occupied. But the state relaxed those requirements and basically said that cities cannot impose that requirement for at least a period of five years. However, if a homeowner had wanted to modify some square footage within their existing home to accommodate a JDU, then yes, you can most definitely still apply the owner occupancy requirements. However, for an ADU in primary residence, we cannot. The other thing that the state did is make it easier to get ADUs on properties where they might otherwise come across a constraint such as parking, then the state basically says that for any garage conversion, so say you have a single-family home with a garage, and you want to convert your garage to an ADU, you can do that, and you don't have to provide replacement parking. So that's kind of a big bonus whereby it may be difficult for a homeowner to find the location on the side to provide that replacement parking. But this is coming down from the state, and they've made it very clear that replacement parking is not required under conditions whereby a garage is converted to an ADU. Previously, the setbacks for ADU, a detached ADU was set at five feet from the side and rear. Well, the state relaxed that a little bit and brought it down to a four-foot setback, side and rear only. The state further went on to say, and this makes sense, that if we're going to be allowing, you know, ADUs that are meant to provide for the much-needed housing that is needed in the Bay Area and across the state, then they wanted to make sure that these would not be used for short-term rentals. So this is a state requirement. And in a little while, I'll go over some of the public comments, but one of the public comments had to do with whether or not we can enforce that or impose that as a restriction in our code. However, it is a state mandate, so we need to do that. However, it is a stanma- state mandate, so, so we, we need to do that. And then finally, um, with respect to size, the state further clarits- clarified what the sizes. Um, could be, what lo- local jurisdictions could impose on the sizes of an ADU and a JDU. So the minimum size that can be built for a one-bedroom ADU is eight hundred and fifty square feet. And the minimum size for a two-bedroom or more ADU is limited to a thousand square feet. So this is something, the minimum that the city has to allow. Um, you can allow for more. I think the largest an EDU can be is twelve hundred. But staff is recommending the minimum. Um, under the um, the umbrella of all the work that was done in the past to really address the massing of single-family homes. So we wanted to be um, conservative in that vein. Um, if it's the commission's desire or the council's desire to make that larger, then we would um, follow that direction. But what we're proposing is the minimum required um, for an ADU in terms of size. And then with respect to JDs, the maximum um, per state law is five hundred square feet. So if you wanted to carve out a portion in your home for a JDU, then the maximum size you can devote to the, towards that is five hundred square feet.
Lisa, I just have a question on that. So minimum of eight hundred and fifty square feet. In the packet, I'm in packet page twenty-three, it says maximum, it shall not exceed eight hundred and fifty square feet. So I guess I, I'm just confused. What, what, how are we applying minimum and maximum there? Are we saying the same thing or?
Yeah, I know it, it sounds, it can sound a little bit in, you know, just, it's a good point to clarify. The state says we have to at least allow that much. Um, so for example, the state is basically saying we can't require, you know, seven hundred square feet and limit it at that. So the, their minimums we have converted into maximums. The maximum for our city would be eight hundred and fifty square feet for a one-bedroom and one thousand, which the state allows. Local jurisdictions to do, provided that they are at least providing a minimum of eight fifty and a minimum of a thousand. So it is kind of.
Uh, Lisa, maybe before you uh, move to the next page, uh, can you remind us what? Uh, i- is a mixed-use uh, zoning area, does that uh? Include residential and retail? Or is it uh, retail and light industrial? Can you just remind us mixed-use, the definition?
Sure, it's um, well, mixed-use in our city, um, the way that it's divine, defined is it can be either. A combination, uh, say some ground floor retail and service-oriented uses. With office above, or it can be residential above. Um, now, what the state law is saying is that wherever residential uses are allowed. Um, then we would need to allow an ADU in, in that building where the residential uses are located. So for example, if um, if there was a mixed-use building that was. Just retail on the ground floor and office above, then we wouldn't want to carve out. They're not saying that you have to carve out a portion of the office above. To accommodate an ADU, it's really limited to where residential uses are allowed. So if it's a mixed-use district with residential above and it within that portion where there's residential, if there was some, a. Extra space that was not being utilized and, you know, the property owner wanted to convert it to a, to a small ADU. Then that would be allowed.
Great, thank you. Um, and, and if I could, one, uh, one other one. The point regarding no replacement parking. Does that mean uh, by, by definition, then the property owner would be? Um, not required to have onsite parking even in the driveway? That the vehicles that were previously sheltered in the garage are now uh, free to park on the street? Is that the implication?
That would be the implication. So for example, um, you know, from a practical standpoint, if there was a driveway, of course, the vehicles can park. In the driveway, but if there was no space for parking to be located on the parcel. Then it's not a requirement. Essentially, it would not be an impediment. Cities cannot require replacement parking when garages are converted.
To any. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So I think I'm going to skip over this slide here. And um, I mentioned this before at the beginning, but just to clarify, these are the amended sections of the code. Um, that would be part of um, a motion tonight, should you choose to make it. And so uh, I just wanted to um, spend maybe a little bit more time. On a couple of provisions. I might have um, answered them already. But just to clarify, the setbacks that would be required um, are now four feet. For the side and rear for an ADU that is detached or an ADU that is detached and above a garage. Um, again, the maximum sizes for an ADU are eight fifty for one-bedroom, a thousand for two. And then maximum eight hundred, um, when property owners are bumping up against maximum lot coverages. Maximum floor area, the natural state or some other um, standard that would normally otherwise be required. The maximum size of a JDU is five hundred square feet.
Lisa, I, I had a quick question on the application of that uh, eight hundred square foot exclusion. Um, so if the ADU is built first. And then the applicant comes forward with a uh, proposal to um, expand the house. Does the house then allow for our current building standard plus the eight hundred feet? Or would we then restrict the house? So if you do it out of order, if you build your ADU first, you'll end up with less in total.
So when we evaluate projects, we need to evaluate them in a way that meets the standards of the code. So say, for example, um, this pre-existing ADU was eight hundred square feet. Then that is the maximum that it could be, um, even if you max out lot coverage or um, maximum floor area. So in that case, where an ADU is eight hundred square feet, then a property owner could theoretically come in and build. The maximum allowed per um, the maximum floor area standard. However, if the ADU was, say, twelve hundred square feet already. And the primary, uh, you know, uh, home was um, was, you know. Say relatively modest-sized home and, and per the MFA, it looked like they could add on. Then um, they would need to probably make some choices because we need to be able to approve it. In a way where we can find that it meets the standards of the code, consistent with state law and so forth. So. Um, there would probably need to be some decisions made in terms of um, whether they wanted to modify the portion of the existing. ADU so that they could max out their MFA. Or perhaps they would just have a limited amount of additional area uh, um, that could be accommodated.
Well, just, ju- I'm not sure I followed that exactly. So just to be clear, if. So the maximum building envelope is two thousand square feet. And now we have an eight hundred square foot um, ADU. So if the, it seems clear. If the two thousand square foot house is already built to that, the maximum MFA or lot coverage. We, they can then add eight hundred square foot ADU to that. That seems clear. But now what if? They have a fifteen hundred square foot house? And then they built the eight hundred square foot ADU. Could they then come back and add five hundred to that or not?
Five hundred to the main house?
Yes.
Uh, well, then they.
Ending up in the same place, just, you know, would we then try to hold them to, to where they're at? Because they already exceeded the two thousand with that ADU? Or is the ADU just flat out excluded regardless of when you add on to the house?
Well, that might be something that we'd have to research, but based upon that particular scenario, if you've already got. Your AD, ADU at um, at a, at twelve hundred square feet or more. And you wanted to build on to your house. Um, you, we could theoretically be creating a non-conforming situation where the house is at an MFA. Meets the MFA and with the ADU exceeding it. So this might be an area that we want to um, confirm, but based upon my understanding. Of the law and of how our code would work, then there would be some limitations and, and choices that property owner would have to make. And if any of my peers would like to jump in, if they might have heard anything on this, Andrea or so Judy, please do so.
Sure, uh, through the chair, um, I think uh, what Chair Dugan is asking is. Um, how it works in reverse. So are you getting the same benefit if you build the ADU first? Can you then go over MFA with the house addition? Um, and the way that we've recommended it now is that uh, no, you cannot. Um, we have. Uh, ADUs count in maximum floor area until you hit the max. Um, so you would, as a homeowner, you would be benefited by building the house first and then the ADU. If you were to max out your maximum floor area with the ADU, then there's no exception in the code to allow you to build a bigger house. Because you already have the ADU.
Okay, yeah, that, that was my question. And was that a deliberate choice staff made?
Yeah, the, the commission could decide to exempt ADUs completely from maximum floor area. However, we uh. Did consciously make that choice because as Lisa mentioned, um, you know, we're concerned with maintaining uh, community standards and also recognizing all the work. The commission and the city council and community did um, on house size. So that is something um, we consciously, you know, wanted to make a recommendation on.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I, um, it's just something I think we should discuss as a commission. I, I'm not sure actually where I would be on that. It just seems like something we should uh, be conscious of. So um, commissioners, let, let's just make sure we discuss that when we get to deliberation.
Okay, thank you. Good questions. Um, I will pick up on item or under the list number four concerning um, height of an ADU. Now, the state is um, limits the height of a detached ADU to sixteen feet. And leaves it, this is one area where local jurisdictions can decide on the maximum height. Of an ADU that's located above a garage. So uh, right now, I believe in our code, the maximum height of an ADU of a garage has been. Um, allowed to be as, as tall as the main house. Is that correct Andrea? Yes. And so what we're doing is when those ADU are, are built over a garage, we're limiting them to twenty feet. And the reason that staff is suggesting a height limitation on ADUs above garage really has to do. With the concerns uh, we received during the house size conversation over privacy and massing. Recognizing that most of these detached ADUs are in the rear yard, we felt that limiting it would um, be. Um, within the um, within the same line of thinking on how to protect the privacy between neighbors. And we did some research um, on other jurisdictions that were kind of having, having the same um, concerns. And where they have modified their ordinances to address height on ADUs located above garages. And so we have, we are proposing twenty feet, but I just wanted to clarify to the commission, this is a decision point. You can make where the state is really silent on this in terms of the height. But the state is not silent on the height of a detached ADU, which is limited to sixteen feet. So we're recommending twenty feet um, when ADUs are above garages.
Lisa, I, I question on that. So um, uh, that sounds reasonable. Uh, you know, we want the housing. We don't necessarily want power looming over neighbors. So I, I understand. Uh, the reasoning there, uh, but it, it, that, that also is essentially mandating a flat roof. And, and so my, my question is, when we move to architectural compatibility, roof pitch is one of the standards of that. So are we, are, by this, are we acknowledging that flat roofs are in all cases uh, architecturally compatible? With the roof pitch that is most likely not flat on the main resident? Or could this potentially be a, a way we don't approve over garage ADUs? Because we then conclude uh, flat roof is incompatible.
Well, the intent wasn't to limit it in some way and, and find a, a design, you know, standard. Um, you know, or imposing a design standard that would be limiting. Um, we looked at other codes and this was um, a common standard and we felt it was appropriate. Um, I don't know if there are any, Andrea, can you let me know if there's any? Um, um, allowances for pitch in the code when it comes to the measurement of height? Or so, we have any background on this particular standard that was researched?
Sure, so um, as you mentioned, our, our previous code had a limit of twenty-eight feet, which is the same as the main residence. Um, but the key thing with that is that in order to achieve that, you also had to meet the main house setbacks. Um, and so in this case, you know, it's a four-foot setback and from the rear instead of fifteen. I'm so pretty big difference. Uh, we did not consciously think that, you know, there should be flat roofs. Um, that is something you could, you could uh, decide on. But I think it's a very good point because there are ways to do pitched roofs and sort of tuck the ADU underneath the roof, right? So it's not um, not as impactful to neighbors in terms of windows and things like that. Um, so, you know, the height, like Lisa said, was just based on uh, neighboring jurisdictions and wanting to lower it a bit from. From what's allowed um, in our previous code, uh, but that is a decision point that you could make and, and provide exceptions for as well. Or, or um, recommend a taller height overall as well.
Okay, thank you. But just to be clear, so i- am I thinking of that the right way? A twenty-foot height limit? For a second floor. I mean, that, that means a flat roof. That can't mean anything else, can it?
I think in many cases, it would probably lead to a roof that is more flat. Um, so I think that's something that we can talk about if the commission is, is, is wanting to look at that a little bit more closely. We're happy to have that conversation.
Okay.
Good idea.
Um, and then in terms of height, if we're talking about um, an ADU that is part of the primary house or building. Then it needs to meet the standards of that building. In which case for a single-family home, it would be a maximum of twenty, twenty-eight, twenty, is it twenty-eight, twenty-six? I guess. Andrea, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
And then um, the state also clarified um, some parking requirements. So first of all, no parking is required, again, as I mentioned, um, when an ADU um. Is um, taking the place of a garage or accessory structure. So no parking for the ADU itself. And no parking, replacement parking for the garage that it is um, replacing. And also, um, this was um, included in the, in the prior set of laws that the state passed. Is that if an ADU is within one-half mile of public transit, then no parking is required. And um, if an ADU is contained within an existing residential, residence or structure, then no parking is required. Um, whenever these exceptions are not met, then it is one space per ADU.
Lisa, can I ask a quick question on this half-mile for public transit? Um, and I think this was raised with the Transportation and uh, Circulation Committee minutes, a, a, a good issue. What, what percentage would you estimate of San Carlos properties? Are not within a half-mile of a bus stop or, or, or any public transit? Is it less than half, more than half? I, I was just curious. Like, I saw that the Transportation Commission. Started to drill down into this and I didn't see a lot of specifics, so I, I just was, was curious and thought I would ask.
Well, I don't have a percentage um, for the, the commission this evening, but um. I think one way to think about it could be uh, geographically. And um, it appears that most of the ADUs that are built or proposed, um. Let's see, um, to the, to the east of Alameda de Las Pogas. Are gonna probably m- mostly be in some, within a half-mile of public trans. Most of them, but it's when you sort of get into the hill areas and to the west of Alameda de Las Pogas where that. Will be the case less often. I don't know if that helps, but I, I don't have it broken down into percentage. I don't know if that helps, but I don't have it broken down into percentage.
That's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so this is something that the commission expressed concern about. And so this had to do with, well, what are the definitions of an ADU and JDU when it comes to really looking closely at the standards for kitchen and sanitation facilities? What are the minimums that they have to require? And so what staff did is they researched other jurisdictions. They combined it with state law. We worked with our own building official to review these. And by adopting these definitions, we wouldn't be in conflict with any health and safety codes or any of the building code standards. So these are the definitions that are proposed in the ordinance before you this evening. So I'm going to sort of start in the middle of the definition of an ADU, simply because I believe this was the concern from the commission last time around. But ADUs shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. And by sanitation, we mean a sink, a toilet, and a shower or tub on the same parcel as a single-family or multifamily dwelling. At minimum, so what we would be looking for is at minimum, the kitchen shall contain a sink, a refrigerator, and either a cooktop or a range. And the difference between an ADU and a JDU is that a JDU can have an efficiency kitchen. So let's move down to the definition of a JDU. So of course, it can't be more than five hundred square feet. It needs to be contained entirely within the single-family dwelling. It must have its own separate entrance. And it may, but it doesn't have to. It may include separate sanitation facilities, again, a sink, toilet, and a shower tub. Or it could at minimum share the sanitation facilities with a single-family dwelling. However, in order for a JDU to be a JDU, it needs to have an efficiency kitchen. So that's the requirement whereby the sanitation facility is can or it doesn't have to. But the efficiency kitchen is defined differently than for an ADU where JDU, it has to have at least, you know, it has to have a sink and it has to have, you know, some cooking facility appliances such as a microwave, a toaster oven, or a hot plate. So a JDU need not have like a full cooktop or range within it. It needs to have a food preparation counter and some storage cabinets. So this is the primary difference between ADU and a JDU has to do with the degree of a kitchen facility and also the sanitation facilities.
One thing I noticed, they proposed legislation locally prohibits bathtubs. I don't know what the, you know, a lot of older people, if you have older people living in the ADU or the JDU, they have walk-in tubs. The people that can't necessarily use a regular shower. So I don't know the rationale for omitting bathtubs.
Andrea or Sadudie, can you maybe perhaps clarify? I don't know if that's the state definition where it says shower slash tub. And I don't, I don't think, I'm not, I guess I'd have to clarify with my colleagues if there was any discussion on whether cities could limit, excuse me, prohibit tubs.
I haven't seen anything, but we can definitely research that. All of the various cities we've looked at, most of them have said bathtub or shower. So we could definitely check and see if that's a new law.
I think I read it in your, in your program. If it is a new law, I don't know why it would, why it would be, but then I don't know why a lot of this ever happened.
But how are we considering shower slash tub? We're saying, like, as proposed, we're saying either a shower or a tub. Is that what a slash means?
No, what I, what I seem to remember reading was they just outlawed bathtubs.
Oh, okay. I mean, but we're looking at the definition that's being proposed to us and it says shower slash tub. So does that mean it has to be a tub combo? Or can you just install a shower?
I think we would need some clarification. I think, well, one thing where we can start is making sure that we are consistent with state law. But if state law allows us to say that we require a shower and not a tub to kind of meet that concern, then that's something that we can look into. But I guess I'd need to look at the state definition. I don't know if staff, Andrea or Sadudie, has that information?
I'm looking through now and I don't see any reference to it. I'm thinking, I'm wondering if it's a reference to allowing, if you allow a tub only, it has to also have, you know, a shower head. You can't just have a tub by itself. But I will keep looking. I don't see anything in the state laws so far. But I'll keep researching as you present.
Yeah, maybe we can come back to that and get some more.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't mean to slow the momentum of the meeting down with bathtubs, but I seem to read it, but I don't have the package page number in front of me. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll have Andrea or Sadudie can look at that while we continue.
Lisa, on these definitions, are these, so the state had some mandates and we've kind of, you know, is this essentially representative of the state definition for these? Or have we, you've further refined these definitions in some way?
They further refined them when it came to the kitchen facility based upon the commission's concern. I think the commission had a request that staff, you know, really define what a cooking facility or a kitchen facility is because the state did not define that. Like, for example, they didn't, you know, talk about the minimum kitchen facility or the type of kitchen facility that must be required for an ADU or must be required for a JDU. So this is staff.
So we're free to, you know, expand or otherwise revise these. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, to the extent that they're consistent with state law. So for example, I mean, I know the commission wouldn't do this, but for example, if you just said it didn't need to have a kitchen facility, well, it needs to. But how we define that, I think we have, we can definitely, you know, take some direction from the commission if you want to look at that closely. We would work with our building official to make sure that whatever direction we were getting from the commission isn't, doesn't create a conflict. And then, you know, take your recommendation forward.
No, I appreciate that. I just, as I recall our discussion in the study session, it was, you know, it was a concern that a JDU wasn't just a bar, right? And I don't see anything in this kitchen definition that any bar wouldn't meet. All you have to do is throw a microwave next to the sink and you're done. This doesn't even require a refrigerator. So I think we base, and every house has a kitchen somewhere and a bedroom. So I think this definition is just a five-hundred-square-foot loophole in our floor area ratio, frankly. And someone gets to add a bar somewhere. That's kind of my off-the-cuff commentary. We can discuss that further. But I think I'd be interested in a more rigorous definition of an efficiency kitchen.
Hi, this is Sadudie. If I may interrupt, I was looking through the state laws. It does define an efficiency kitchen for junior ADUs. And it defines it, which shall include all of the following: a cooking facility with appliances, a food preparation counter and storage cabinets. And so it's basically mimicking the same definition that we bring in the proposed.
Well, does the state code define appliances? Because I think, you know, I don't think a toaster oven is all that's meant by appliances, frankly.
Initially, it did, but it's been crossed out. Initially, it was defined as appliances that do not require electrical service greater than a hundred and twenty volts or natural or propane gas, but that's been stripped out and now it's just appliances.
Okay, so we are free to clarify what the definition of appliances to be a JDU in San Carlos, correct?
That's my understanding and that's kind of what we saw in the other city ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, so we can always come back to the slide when the commission is ready to discuss these items. I just have one more slide before we wrap up the presentation.
Lisa, sorry to interrupt, but I found what Don was speaking about with the bathtub, if you want me to address that now.
Sure, that'd be great, Andrea. Thank you.
What's the packet page number? Are we on?
We are on packet page ninety-nine, at the bottom of the page under I facilities. And this is a part of the general site regulations for accessory buildings, not ADUs. Under facilities I, it talks about a detached accessory structure that has not been approved as an accessory dwelling unit may contain a toilet, shower, and sink upon review and approval by the building official and director, and a bathtub is not permitted. That's referring to if, for example, you have a shower and bathroom in your garage, you wouldn't also be able to have a bathtub. So this specifically refers to detached units that are not accessory dwelling units. They can't have a bathtub in there. They can only possibly have a shower and bathroom.
I'm reading that it still sounds to me like it's not allowed. Bathtub is not permitted, but that's only in, what did you say?
Detached accessory structures that have not been approved as accessory dwelling units.
Donna, I think this is trying to say you're not an ADU if you have a tub.
Yeah. Yeah, I just was thinking about a lot of people that might live in ADUs, you know, that couldn't take showers and regular bathtub would be unsafe. They have these walk-in, you know, it's a big tub, high tub with a seat in it and a door that opens that they can get in. It's about the same size, I guess, as a regular tub. I'm sorry, this is just a nitpicky detail, but it might make a difference to somebody down the line.
And through the chair, just to clarify, this provision does not apply to ADUs or JDUs. It's if, let's say you have a pool house and you're not using it as an ADU. Or it's just, you know, detached building with a bathroom. It can't have a bathtub in it.
Good point, yeah.
But we could clarify that further.
Thank you very much.
It sounds like what Commissioner Bradley is concerned about is under, would fall under the concept of universal design and eaten in place and not, and wanting to ensure that what's installed is going to be accessible to those that might find it difficult to, you know, utilize a bathtub versus a shower. I think, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I understand. Thank you.
I would say, though, that, I mean, I completely agree, Don. We should in no way restrict the ability to put a tub in. That said, I don't like the vagueness of shower slash tub. And I know a lot of good design now just has a walk-in shower with no tub. So I don't want to be requiring tubs either. We certainly don't want to restrict tubs, but, you know, we can get to this in deliberation. But I think I would want that to just say shower because I really don't know what a shower slash tub implies.
Okay, yeah. Well, I think we should make it less restrictive if possible.
And that less restrictive would be a shower because you can have a smaller shower than a tub. But you certainly could have a tub if you wanted one.
And maybe Don's thought was by prohibiting a tub and only allowing a shower, it might not accommodate the group that he was thinking of.
Yeah, which is, who knows, probably just a small percentage of people that would use, be living in an ADU would be people that needed, you know, disabled people that couldn't use a shower or a regular tub. It wouldn't be safe for them, but the walk-in would solve the problem. So I just didn't want to be overly restrictive.
It's a great point, and I don't see anything in these definitions that would restrict you doing any manner of ADA tub within the size. So we're defining the minimum standard of these things. And I think just saying shower defines a better minimum standard. And that in no way prevents you from doing a tub if that's the use you prefer.
And through the chair, that is something that the commission can clarify when looking at this definition. If at minimum, the commission wanted to ensure that a shower was provided to address this concern, that could be something the commission can make, a modification the commission can make this evening.
Okay. All right, we can move on.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so as of the writing of the report, staff did send out, well, let me just back up a bit. On May first, staff released the draft ordinance by posting it on the project webpage and also making social media posts on the city's Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor accounts. And we also noticed this meeting per minimum requirements per state law. But as of the writing of this report, staff did receive four comments that came in. And these are, these comments were synthesized for the commission this evening and are provided in packet page two forty-four to two forty-eight. And some of the comments that we received really focused on what's shown here in this slide. You know, wanting to know, well, what does the addition of an ADU, what might that do to property taxes? Concerns about fire safety and a four-foot side or rear yard setback. Asking whether or not we could indeed impose restrictions on short-term rentals. There was a question about architectural compatibility and whether the ADU can really differ from the design and basic design elements of the primary home. Whether this ordinance would affect new or existing ADUs. Sometimes this is a common question when new regulations are passed for those that already have ADUs. Sometimes there's a confusion about what it might mean to that existing ADU. And certainly, any new law that's passed would only apply to new applications and new development. So anything that's existing, it would be, would be legal non-conforming if it in fact happened to be non-conforming to the set of rules that would be adopted by the council. One public comment had to do with whether staff worked with the building official in reviewing this ordinance specifically as it relates to fire safety, construction, et cetera. And just to ensure the commission and the public that yes, we did, we did have this ordinance reviewed by the building official. And nothing in this ordinance would supersede any requirement that would otherwise normally be required for building permit issuance. There were some questions about ADU affordability, similar to what the commission previously discussed. And then lastly, we did get a recommendation that where the ADU or JDU had ingress or egress relative to a side or rear yard and really kind of looking at the privacy concerns, that there should be some sort of privacy screening kind of built into these entrance areas to maintain some sense of privacy along those property lines. So we did address all of these questions and I know there's probably some additional public comment this evening. But those are generally the comments that were received as of the writing of this report. And this project and proposed, consisting of proposed amendments to the ordinance, was, the notice was made available. The notice was made available on the project website and, like I mentioned, posted on social media. And then legally noticed and published in the local newspaper. This is the recommended motion, should the planning commission choose to make it. This concludes staff's presentation and both Andrea and Sojuda and myself. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Uh terrific, Lisa, thank you. That was a good overview and it's clear um you guys all put a lot of work into this, so thank you for that. Um, commissioners, any further questions of uh staff on this?
Yes, I have a question and I'd like to clarify a bit about the height, uh the maximum height. And I get it if it's a uh ADU on top of a garage, that that maximum height can be twenty feet or in. Perhaps we'll de- debate uh whether that twenty-foot number is the right number, but if you have. A, let's say, a single-story house, could you put a second-story ADU on top of the house somewhere else? Um, the wording that I read there was if it's part of the primary house, it must meet the standard for the main house. And you mentioned that was twenty-eight feet, so. Can you put a second story on your house and call it and and have it be an ADU?
You could. You could, it would be, it would take the place of an attached, I mean, it would take the form of an attached ADU. And whenever it is attached to the primary residence, where it um where the issue of height. Would um direct how that ADU was to be developed, then it falls within within the primary, the standards for the primary dwelling unit. So yes, if you had a single-story home and you wanted to develop above it. And provide, um, you know, maybe it's a one and two-story EDU and it's attached to the rear. You could theoretically do that and it would be, you you could make it the same height as. Well, you could, you could, you can build that second-story um element just with the height that is currently allowed for the primary dwelling unit.
And that provision is is really part of the state. Law, we would have to allow that, um because the. Is that correct?
I don't believe the state talks about the maximum height when it's attached. The state really limits. Where the state gets involved mostly is where it's um placed. So if it's attached, um it can be as close as four feet to the side and four feet to the rear. However, it needs to be. Um, um, it can be as tall as the primary, the primary, as the standard is for the primary single-family dwelling. So the state doesn't tell us how hot, how tall the EDU should be when it's attached to a primary home.
I see. And we're saying that if it's over the garage, then there'd be a twenty-foot limit, but if it's not over the garage, then um. It could be a twenty-eight foot. Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Through the through the chair, I believe if it's attached above a garage, then it can go up to twenty-eight feet. The twenty-foot limit is only. Excuse me, over detached garages.
Oh, I see.
Yes, good clarification.
Okay, that makes more sense.
I have one question. I see in the law that the approval process for ADU construction i- is to be streamlined. Is that something that the state has put some um detail on? Or is that up to each city to to think about, well, what is our streamlined process? And I'm assuming that means a faster process. Do do they, I didn't see anywhere in the packet where it said, well, how much faster or is it a lot faster? I'm hoping that it is.
Yeah, the state is basically requiring that cities approve um proposed ADUs within sixty days. Is that correct, Andrea? Sixty days?
Correct, unless I believe it's unless it's part of uh a new residence.
That's right. So if someone is proposing a new home and an ADU as part of the overall new development. Then um the timing for that really gets um folded into the timing for the single-family home, but if it's. Just an ADU um in and of itself, then the state is requiring that we uh process those within uh sixty days.
So that. I did see that and I didn't fully understand it. How how much time does it take now? How much faster is sixty days? Well, how much, how fast is it now?
Well, um Andrea, do we have any data on that?
Yeah, uh again, talking about uh ADUs that are not associated with with new houses. Um, and kind of someone just coming in with with just an ADU, we've actually pre- preemptively um decided to. You know, fast-track them knowing that they're coming. Um, and right now they just have to submit directly to building um for permits. As part of that process, planning staff looks at it to make sure it meets all of the development guidelines and, of course, the design um review. But by submitting to building first, they're saving at minimum thirty days. Um, and I would say um probably even a little bit more. But they're saving at least thirty days by not having to go to planning first. Uh, and it it definitely, I I believe streamlines the process. They're they're getting approved much quicker than than before.
Shaving thirty days off is a big deal. Yeah, thank you. That was helpful.
Sure.
Uh, do you have any data on how many E- ADUs were built before January first of this year? I I I seem to remember we asked uh Al or someone, Lisa, maybe. Uh, in the past, maybe back in the October meeting. And it was a very low figure. I was quite surprised, something like ten or twelve in a whole year. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, that doesn't sound too far off. Um, I would say prior to twenty seventeen. We probably had maybe four to six a year. And then twenty sixteen, where the new laws started falling into place, we really saw an uptick. And since then, um I think now we're kind of closer to maybe perhaps eighteen to twenty a year. Where it used to be as much as about four to six. And um I don't have, I don't have it, I don't have the figures for last year off the top of my head. But generally, that's the trend that we've been seeing.
But you're seeing an uptick this year since we have no alternative to but to approve them.
Correct, since January, there's still quite a bit of interest in um building ADUs. That we're seeing, maybe Andrea, I don't know, you can speak to that, but it seems like it's pretty regular, at least once a month, you know, we're getting.
I see contractors advertising, build an ADU for you uh in the papers.
Yeah, Donna, don't, I I have a note from our study session that a hundred and thirty-two ADUs have been built in San Carlos since nineteen eighty-six. So I I don't have a citation for that, but I wrote that down from something, someone told us.
I have that same number and um. Uh, actually, Lisa, you had shared uh forty-seven in the past three years, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
That sounds about right in keeping with those numbers.
Yeah, so Lisa, I have a question. So I, you know, I do, um, I mean, ADUs are a nice add to the city. I'm generally supportive of them. Uh, definitely can evenly distribute additional housing load in a way that can help us meet the crisis. That's that's kind of my nickel thought on them. Um. And and the expedited design review is terrific as well. Uh, I like some of the work Redwood City has been doing with regard to. Pre-approved uh designs. So basically, if you have a flat lot. And you want it detached, you know, here's eight designs that have been developed by decent architects. Pick one, it's automatically approved. We've already reviewed it, we know it works. Um, is and and I I can see us getting to that point. Uh, that's a nice place to be to make these. Uh, you know, why make everyone spend another twenty-five thousand dollars on architecture to come up with roughly the same thing? Um, so I think we really could help uh folks uh financially just by having some designs that we like and. Um, uh putting them out there. That's what Redwood City's been up to. Um, so uh we can grow into that, of course. But would we need anything in this code now to provide for that? Or is that just administrative? Like, if you guys know these plans work, you can just uh. Um, you know, provide an expedited process or or to get to something like that. Would we need to provide for that in this revision now?
No, I don't think we would need to provide for that in this revision. I think this would be a program that the um department could adopt. It's sort of like an implementation measure um that that um. That we can definitely do and certainly within our land use policies. For example, our housing element policy, we do have um some action items um kind of that are similar to this. And like, what can we do to promote ADUs? What can we do to facilitate ADUs? So if it's developing a brochure or some sort of guide, it would fall um in line with some of the policies. That we currently have. And certainly, when we get, um, I'll talk about this when we conclude this evening. But you know, we're going to be starting work to update our housing element. And so that's exactly where these types of conversations um would fall under, like, you know, developing policy action items. On programs, things we that we can do to facilitate, assist and promote the development of housing and ADUs. So um that's something that staff can can definitely look at. And I think it's a, it's a good suggestion to be as helpful as we can um to what are typically, you know, homeowners looking to find. Some guidance and getting some assistance from cities on how to make this a very easy process.
Okay, no, that's good. I'm glad uh we wouldn't have to provide for that at this time. We can just grow into that uh programmatically. Um, are are you able to uh screen share the um our, the the planning packet? Lisa, I I ask because I I found the visualizations, those graphics that you did. Of how ADUs will mesh in on various lots. I I found those really beneficial and good visuals. And I just thought maybe if it was easy, we could flip through those briefly for anyone watching. Uh, these proceedings because they might not have gotten to, you know, page two hundred and twenty-three of the packet, but I think it's worth everyone. Having a quick look at these graphics if that's doable.
Yeah, I think I can, if you give me just a minute, I don't know if the commission wants staff to go through those first and then take public comment. Or we could take public comment and after that we can sort of flip through these. Um.
I I guess I even think public comment might benefit from seeing these these graphics if if it can be done. You know.
Sure, if you.
By all means, take a minute if it.
Yeah, it'll it'll take a minute for me to bring down that, but I will, I will do so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, while you're doing that, uh I had a question about the graphics. I found them helpful. But um they were for five thousand square foot lots and seven thousand something square foot lots. Uh, did you look at four thousand square foot lots?
No, we did not. We, you know, there are, there's quite a range of different lots to use. We use five thousand because that's the um kind of the predominant lot size. And then, and then we do have, you know, a good amount of lot sizes that are larger, so we picked the larger one. Um, because, simply because you can have more bulk and mass on the site. So that's kind of what drove our decisions, but um to answer your question, no, we don't have it for four thousand.
That's what I'm concerned about is the four thousand square foot lot with two ADUs or. JDUs on it. Uh, I don't know if it'd be possible, but according to the state mandate. We can't deny it based on floor area ratio or lot coverage, so we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. Just a comment.
Yeah, I mean, your points well taken, Donna, on a small lot, you know, thirteen hundred extra feet is pretty substantial. Um.
Right.
When we had our study session, I think I was warming up to the eight hundred feet uh for an ADU. But given the state mandate that you get to also throw a five hundred square foot JDU, which. You know, looks an awful lot like like a bar to me. Um.
What's that?
Yeah, so any any other uh questions of commissioners? Uh, hopefully we get to that graphic, but we can move on to public comment.
Uh, through the through the chair, I did also um have an updated number of second, or sorry, accessory dwelling units. Um, since December, which is when uh the laws, people started learning about the laws and and sending in their plans. We've had about eighteen submitted from December to today. Um, that that basically tracks ones that have gone straight to building. Uh, and it and does not include necessarily the ones that have come with brand-new homes. So I would say, you know, somewhere between the range of maybe eighteen and twenty-two within the last six months.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think I can. All right, can everyone see this okay?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, so um. There are quite a few different uh options that we looked at. And so we'll just go through these. Um, and if there's one we want to stop and discuss, you know, you can let me know. Um, but this is an example of um. A detached ADU, a one-bedroom, you know, so we know what the size limit is on that. And that it is MFA compliant, meaning the detached ADU together with the primary home. Um, is compliant with the standards for maximum floor area. And in this scenario, one of the things I wanted to remind the commission is that whenever there was a detached garage, as you can see in this image here, it's sort of in the. Pinkish hue, kind of where the little my mouse is. Um, when it's detached from the main house, up to, I believe it's four hundred square feet. Uh, is is exempt from the MFA. So, so that is what this this scenario is is depicting here.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Can you just say that again? Up to four hundred feet is exempted if it's detached?
Is it four hundred, Andrea?
I forget.
Or four fifty?
Uh, I believe it's four fifty, let me check.
Okay, and then just to be clear, when you say this is a uh MFA compliant house. Um, there could also be another five hundred square foot JDU in there too. So we we should maybe even have a pink JDU sticking out of these things. Is that, is that right?
The 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 um, the area where, so really that provision where um. An ADU uh exceeds the lot coverage. Or the maximum floor area, if a city should have one like we do, it's really limited to ADUs. A JDU, J- JADU, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh Sojuda and Andrea, a JDU still needs to comply with lot coverage and MFA? Or are JDUs exempt from that as well? I thought it was just the ADU.
Uh, I believe JDUs can add up to one hundred and fifty square feet max um to the house in order to accommodate it.
Okay, that's good. I I thought the full five hundred got accepted as well, so I'm I'm glad to hear that. If if you could verify that, Andrea, the one fifty, because I, that's an important aspect.
And um to clarify the earlier question, uh for a detached garage located at the rear of a lot, at least forty feet from the front property line. Uh, can be exempted four hundred and fifty square feet from the maximum floor area.
Okay.
Yeah, so what this image here is showing is the maximum floor area really absorbed by the primary dwelling. And that detached accessory dwelling unit in the back. So all of that would be MFA compliant. Where the garage square footage would not be included because it's it's already excluded per the existing standards that we have.
I'm afraid what might happen uh is people will submit plans. For approval and add on hundreds of additional square feet and say it's an ADU. When it's really not one, but they'll get along, uh they'll get away with creating a. Much bigger house on a maybe a small lot.
Well, one of the things that staff is looking for is to make. Well, one of the things that staff is looking for is to make sure. That that additional square footage, let's just say the building in the back, you know, that's in blue right now. That it really has all of the elements of a living facility, a bedroom, sanitation facility, a cooking facility, its own entrance. And the other thing that staff does is we put a um. A deed or a deed restriction on that, it's required um that that be utilized as an ADU. So.
For rent or for a family member.
Yeah, it doesn't, it 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 can be for a family member or it can be for a non-family member. There are no restrictions on that. And um that's essentially a and the restrictions for short-term rental are imposed on on any new ADU.
Lisa, can you clarify, uh maybe must it be rented? I mean, I think that's the point, but is that is that the minimum standard? That these are units for rent and there is an expectation that they are rented?
Well, yes, there is an expectation that they are rented, but there is, there are no requirements to my knowledge that. That forces the property owner to say, for example, charge a rent, like perhaps it could be used for a. Um um a child coming home from college and if the owner decides they don't want to charge rent to the. To their to their um to their family member, you know, or their grandparent. Um then there's there's nothing to enforce that that there has to be a um a rent collected.
Sure, so i- in that scenario, and I think this is where we we traveled last time. If I have a house in this scenario that meets floor area ratio maximized it. Detached garage of seven hundred and fifty feet, I could still build up to eight hundred and fifty more square feet. Um and effectively add a whole other living space. Um and not have to charge rent for it. And it so long as it met the requirements as you've outlined, separate entrance. Um living sanitation and cooking facilities, then I could, if I wanted to use that land, I could use it that way.
Well, I I think we would probably want to get some guidance from. Perhaps our legal counsel or from our colleagues and from the state, but to my understanding, there there's not. There's not um. I don't think there's anything we can do to 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 work with the property owners to ensure that indeed they are collecting a rent. On the property. On on the areas that they are building that are designated as an ADU and that meets all the requirements. Of the state and the city alike. Um I don't know if this was a question that came up with twenty-one elements. Andrea or so Judy, perhaps it did, perhaps it didn't, but but you know, I I. To my knowledge, there's there's the city, you know, we we don't have an ability. To enforce um that um, you know, a specific rent or a market rate rent be collected.
And I I I'll chime in. I I would not be comfortable trying to mandate how people are using a private residence like that. I just. I I think that's well beyond our purview as planners here.
Yeah, I would agree with that too. It you can't um, we we can have the structural requirements that it be functional as a separate unit, but. If they um decide to however people want to use it, that would be very difficult to define and enforce and. So so we're sort of trading uh trading the opportunity to have additional housing, but there we are opening the door for. For some people perhaps to take advantage of that.
And I think actually.
Just the price, the price that we're willing to take, I think, uh in order to get the additional housing stuff.
I I think that's right ways to to both of my colleagues' points. This is not something we, it is in our purview to mandate. It is just for for the public, this is an outcome of where we are and making this choice and we. We should just be clear that it might happen.
That's right.
Understood. So somewhat related to that, as far as use goes, what what is our thinking on? The restriction for short-term rentals? I mean, arguments can be had on both sides of that and. It seems to me that that almost is a, you know, a separate policy area, short-term rentals and how they should be handled. Um why do we want to uh partially grapple with that issue in the midst of an ADU? Um uh update?
Well, where the state um what the state is basically saying is that on one hand. They're 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 taking away some local control, you know, we could, we can call it that, you know, they're mandating four-foot setbacks. They're mandating garage conversions with no parking, no parking, the parking not not required to be replaced. Man, you know, they're 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 loosening loosening up some standards to make it easier to get ADUs in. But they want them, you know, to be ADUs, so I I hear and appreciate the concern about, you know, the rent discussion that we just had. So along this those lines, what the state is saying that they don't want to. You know, basically make it so easy to get these in only to have them be used as for business purposes. You know, like a a commercial uh functioning type of space where it's a short-term rental and people are renting them out. For one weekend or a week at a time. So what the state is saying is that, you know. They need to be rented for at least thirty days. So that is the shortest amount of time someone could rent their ADU. For for at lea- it has to be rented for at least thirty days.
Yeah.
They the next thirty days it can be rented um by somebody else for a total of thirty days. And that's really to ensure that this additional development is providing um. You know, it's filling a gap to sort to serve the housing needs. That's where this comes into.
Got it. And so, I mean, the state has allowed us to do that, but we're not mandated to restrict that, is that correct?
The state is mandating that we have to include it in our ordinance, a minimum of thirty days.
Oh, is that right? Okay, that's interesting. Because I mean, I I I actually have no idea where I would be on that personally. It's a very complicated area. Um the obvious perverse effect or unintended consequences. Now there's a strong incentive to live in your ADU and um Airbnb out your entire house. So that's probably an outcome of that restriction would be more houses available on ADUs, which. I doubt is the intent, um just pointing out, you get, you know, the these are complicated areas.
Or people that are just downsizing, they're moving to their new ADU and rent out their. Uh their previous previous family house for more money.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, we we better keep moving though. Um Lisa, do you want to run through these graphics quickly?
Sure, sure. So this is the first scenario. I think we covered that um graphic two um. So what is the difference? Oh, this is just a larger lot. So it's the same scenario as before, but it is a larger lot. Greater than seventy-five hundred square feet.
Okay, and it's worth thinking about, and so is this showing, these are all single floor right now, right? So these have a maximum height of sixteen feet, is that correct?
Um I'd want, can somebody help me out here? I think there's a sheet that goes along with this, Judy or Andrea.
Yeah, so according um according to the sheet, graphic one is um showing a two-story ADU can be developed. At or under sixteen. Um graphic two, sort of graphic three. Um the consideration and comments attached, two-story ADU could be developed at under sixteen. Feet with excavation at base. Um so the ADU shown here in this graphic is sixteen feet in height.
So these are are meeting that six, we're we're detached, they're meeting the sixteen-foot height requirement. I mean, they're built to the max. This is what we asked our graphic designer to prepare is, you know, the maximum. So in that in that envelope, you could have a one or two story, just depending upon how you wanted.
Okay, great. And as we're looking at these, I do think keeping those JDUs in mind uh is useful. Andrea, did you? Did you have any luck where i- is that the answer? A hundred and fifty square feet of additional JDU space is also allowed over. Our maximum floor area?
Yeah, so I was just looking through um the state laws on that and it looks like the intent is really. For JDUs to be in existing bedrooms, like converting an existing bedroom um for five hundred feet. Um however, if there needs to be ingress or egress um as part of that, then one hundred and fifty feet. Um and of additional footprint would have to be allowed up to that to allow for ingress and egress. Um but we wouldn't, i- if if the existing unit or the proposed unit within the existing space met the requirements. I don't think we would need to allow that additional one hundred and fifty square feet if they could meet their ingress and egress requirements.
Got it. But if someone was proposing a ground up, they could go straight to the maximum floor area. And then add nine hundred and fifty additional feet, correct?
Can you say that again? Sorry, I'm not.
I follow the numbers, but.
Yeah, um you ground up construction, all being proposed at once, you in San Carlos, you would now have. The maximum floor area, which, you know, we all spent a lot of time developing that. And because of the state mandate, uh it is now our maximum plus eight hundred. For an ADU plus one fifty for a JDU and they'd have to configure it, so they had an entrance way to make that one fifty. But we're basically at MFA plus nine fifty, is uh am I understanding that correctly?
And I think in that case, if it were a brand-new house in construction, um the city would be able to argue that that additional one fifty would not be needed. Because they could design the house to have an entrance to the JDU as part of their original design. They're not working with um. You know, e- existing conditions where there's no way to design it.
I see, and and I guess th- these are the kind of areas, you know, I mean, this is what everyone will think about, right? So we should be clear and deliberate, whether we're intending that or not. It shouldn't be vague and and, you know, a head-scratcher for everyone. Uh did staff develop an opinion on this?
Think it's provided in the code, but we'll need a second in the proposed ordinance. I think I. That one hundred and fifty is mentioned, um but I need to find the packet page.
I like that the line of thinking that Commissioner Dugan is is raising here. But but to keep it simpler, let's just talk about adding a JDU to a new construction. So generally, in the old days, you were limited to the maximum floor area ratio, and now with a with a JDU. Uh that allows five hundred square feet, would it be MFA plus five hundred? You could build a new house. Um with a five hundred-foot addition additional square footage.
A JDU, since it's a new home, there is opportunity to include it with the primary residence such that it meets the MFA.
I see. So then, so it doesn't give you a uh free rein to add five hundred square feet.
That is correct.
Onto the MFA, just and and since it's new, you wouldn't even get the hundred and fifty square feet that you could potentially get if you were adding on to a. Okay, so that that's um somewhat comforting in terms of not letting this be a big loophole in our inner size and mass rules, so.
And to clarify, you're exactly right, and the one fifty is really for pre-existing conditions where they might want to convert it. An area within the home, but then they need to provide a way to access the ADU and then they have one fifty for that purpose.
And for me, that sounds pretty reasonable.
And load it's uh section three E.
What page, so Judy?
Um.
Packet page?
Let me, let me grab that.
Yeah, we can deliberate on this, but I would want to be clear about it. I mean, the additional eight hundred is already pretty dramatic. I, you know. To the extent we can, I would say we wouldn't allow anything extra for a JDU. Except perhaps the one fifty if necess- necessitated by existing conditions or something like that.
Um that's in packet page twenty-two.
And it's uh. Oh, it's it's E.
Oh, okay.
E on page, packet page twenty-two.
Yes.
Is allowed solely to accommodate ingress and egress for the JDU, limited to one hundred and fifty square feet. So the commission needs a minute to, or or I can read that again if you like, but it's um. It basically states. An expansion beyond the existing physical structure of the primary residence is allowed. Solely to accommodate ingress and egress for the JDU, but it's limited to one hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, it's funny though, that is not referencing maximum floor area exemption. That is simply. Referencing an exception to the requirement that JDUs are completely within the existing four walls. So this is saying you can get an extra one fifty to put in a a door for your JDU, but otherwise it has to be inside the residence. It does not speak as an exemption from the MFA.
Correct, so if you have an existing house that is quite large and beyond the new. Like all of those house houses, it could be the case, they're legal non-conforming. The legal non-conforming aspect would not preclude a property owner from modifying their home such that they carve out a portion to be that. Five hundred square foot JDU, JADU, but if they needed um some additional square foot, it's just to provide entrance. And exit, then they can 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 do that, but only up to one hundred and fifty.
I see. So I I I think you tell me if, I mean, I think we should be clear that JDUs are not exempt from MFAs. And then an applicant could could lean on this to maybe get one fifty, but I just think we should have it clear somewhere. Just state that JDUs are not, there is no ex- additional exemption from MFA and lot coverage for JDUs.
I agree with that, and it's particularly relevant for new construction where you don't just get to add. Don't s- say that you get, I need extra space because I want to include a JDU.
Ditto.
Hey, I think um I have those in my notes.
Okay, great. Sorry, we're to graphic three. Let's see if we can get through all these.
Okay, so graphic four is the same thing, except it's a two-bedroom. ADU on on a larger lot. So a lot of these are going to look the same at the beginning, so um. Now, this is, okay, so now graphic five is looking at, so what we just saw. Prior to this slide here are ADUs that are detached. Now we're looking at attached. So again, here, this is just showing an attached one-bedroom ADU, again, MFA compliant. Um the se- the graphic six, uh same thing, just a larger lot. Graphic seven, um here's the two-bedroom, MFA um compliant. Um attached two-bedroom A- in ADU.
But on these, Lisa, um so it's MFA compliant, but that means. Some of that two-bedroom is part of the MFA, right? Because they're only getting a bleed over of eight hundred feet, not the entire blue, correct?
It it's it's everything combined, so it'd be the primary residence, the attached two-bedroom. But not, you know, the beige or pink-colored detached garage, because those are exempt from MFA.
Got it.
Everything together would be MFA compliant. So so far, we've really seen examples that are MFA compliant and to illustrate. You know, even operating with the MFA, you get this much development on your lot. So I think maybe what the commission would be interested in seeing is where it's not MFA compliant. So again, same situation, but this one is um is the um the two-bedroom. Okay, so starting with graphic nine, now we're starting to see examples that exceed the maximum floor area. So in these cases, um the um. The size of the ADU is going to be limited to eight hundred square feet, again, just by virtue of e- exceeding. So no matter what the bedroom size, whenever you exceed lot coverage or MFA, regardless of bedrooms, you get eight hundred square feet maximum, and this is uh per state law. So in this situation, um, the MFA has exceeded. In this case, we're showing a garage conversion, so no replacement parking provided, that detached garage has now been converted to an ADU. But if you were to count the square footage together, it would exceed the MFA. Um in this case here, this is just a larger lot. Um this is an example of exceeding the MFA. You know, you have um say that this house is already at the MFA. Um, if you do garage conversion, you can, and this is what it would look like at or exceeding the MFA, because some of the homes that we have are going to be exceeding the MFA. But they can still do an ADU, provided that it's no larger than eight hundred square feet.
That's a good point.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, so here's a scenario that could likely happen. We see a lot of homes where, you know, you have the garage somewhat in the front in some of the um, you know, the kind of older traditional designs where you have a single car garage in front. Um, you can indeed convert that into an ADU. So in this case, it's MFA compliant. Um, we're just showing that example of what it would look like, and you're compliant with the MFA. So that garage in front is now in a converted, converted into um an ADU. And this example, same thing, it's just a larger lot. So some of these are repeats with the, because we use, simply use two different sized lots. So here's the scenario where we're starting to show what ADUs look like above a garage and they're MFA compliant. And a larger size lot, same scenario above the garage and MFA compliant. And here's the case where the MFA has exceeded. Now, we're, we decided to use a real possibility where you have that, you know, garage that may be um twenty feet from the front property line. And provided that, you know, it's, we do have a requirement for the second story massing to be set back a minimum of nineteen feet. In this scenario, because we have the garage at twenty feet back, they could build an ADU above that, and that second story massing would comply with a front yard setback and could be converted to um an ADU.
Got it. And you're showing a sloped roof there, but I, like, is that even doable in under twenty feet?
Um, I, this may be in the notes, but I'd have to look that up um in terms of some of the assumptions that they made. Um, if.
Yeah, just on your, that that is one to look at, because with a flat roof, that's gonna be pretty ugly, for sure, from the street.
I had asked about that earlier, and I thought it was clarified that for an attached, uh attached ADU, it, the rules would be that it subscribed to the um house limit of twenty-eight feet.
That's a correct, good point. In this scenario, the garage is attached, the ADU would be considered attached. And um so that is not a detached garage, so that ADU could indeed meet the um front yard second story setback or or first, um, yeah, the front yard second story setback and um be within the height limits of the primary dwelling unit, which is at twenty-eight feet per code.
So the the straight wall on the snout house can be twenty-eight feet high? Okay.
I believe it's to the pitch. Is that correct, Andrea?
Right. The highest point, yeah.
The highest.
That's, that's gonna be unattractive, by the way.
Okay, so I will move on. Um now, this is the same scenario, I believe, yes, exceeded MFA, but just on a larger lot. And with a larger lot, you get a larger home, so you're seeing a larger, you know, massing on the site. Um, okay, so now we're looking at a detached um ADU that can exceed the maximum flo- that that is exceeding the maximum floor area where a property owner chooses not to put it above a garage. Maybe they still want to have their their parking. Well, provided that they can be four feet away from the side and rear, that they're not exceeding sixteen feet in height. Um, they can indeed put an ADU a maximum of eight hundred square feet on the lot.
Okay. And just, uh, so lot coverage, um, like, what the are there practical reasons we have lot coverage ratios, like regarding drainage and runoff? I mean, do these houses pose some kind of threat, given that, you know, that's, that is you know, a very solidly covered lot now? Is that, is that present drainage or other issues now?
Well, they would still need to comply with all of the otherwise required uh standards and regulations for runoff and ensuring that any runoff is um absorbed onto the property. So it doesn't preclude all other regulations from um being adhered to. What what the state is really saying is that they don't want lot coverage in maximum floor areas to be limit- limiting factors. But any requirements that are imposed by building for fire and life safety, structural requirements and 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 um stormwater runoff requirements, those still need to be adhered to, is my.
But I I I thought our stormwater runoff requirements were dealt with with our fifty percent lot coverage standard, but anyway, uh, that's a deeper topic.
Would the creek setback rules um still apply?
They would still apply. So where where an ADU was um going to, say it was running up, like bumping up against a limitation such as, you know, maybe it's um the creek setback or other requirement. Um, it it doesn't mean that, you know, we just throw away our our creek setback requirements. It means that um this particular development um would still get to at least build eight hundred square feet, you know, up to that if they can, if they can fit it in onto the lot. Um, but in order to determine if um they could be closer than twenty-five feet from the creek setback, they would have to go through the regular practices that any other development would need to go through. And that is situations where um those types of projects come before the planning commission for review, um, a biological study or a study on the creek to make sure that there's no um detrimental impacts to the creek will still need to be adhered to. So this is a situation that came up, not just in our, in our cities, but some other cities, because, you know, the state didn't take that into account. So what we're saying is that we still want projects to adhere to that standard, but where they're bumping up against it, we would otherwise, you know, want to do a study to make sure that the development is being done in a way that is most sensitive to the creek. And under those situations, it would have to go through that normal process. Um, one of the things that we have to do, and it's mentioned in the staff report, is to um present our ordinance after it's adopted to the state where they review it. It's not like the housing element where it needs certification, but the state will review it, and they will let us know if we overstepped some areas. And if the issue of the creek comes up, we'll have that discussion with the state. But at this point, we are um adhering to our our regular practices when it, when it comes to development in proximity to the creek.
One thing to add to that, um, through our our discussions with other jurisdictions and our twenty-one elements group, uh, we do not have to, so, for example, if someone came in and said, I get to build an eight hundred square foot ADU, and I want to put it here, and it's in the creek setback, and this is where I want to put it. We don't have to allow that if there's somewhere else on the lot that they can reasonably build it. So just because there's this eight hundred square foot exception, it's not carte blanche to build it wherever you'd like on the lot. Um, you have to also demonstrate that, you know, the location you're proposing is is the most reasonable and and the best for um, you know, the environment and the lot as well. Now, if the lot was full and that was the only place it could be allowed, then we would have to allow it there. Um, but it's not, it's not a by right, you know, picking, picking the place that that the property owner wants. Um, and I, you know, violating any development standards to do that. The development standards can only be, you know, violated, so to speak, or waived if there's no other option for them to build on the lot. So it's kind of a a last resort.
If there is a a a an easement along the side or the back of the property that is, let's say it's five feet, then that would mean that the four-foot setback would be disallowed because of the easement. Can the building abut the easement, or is there also room that needs to be given? If there's a five-foot easement, you need two feet or four more feet beyond the easement, or you can go right up to it?
Uh, you can go right up to the easement. So that takes into account any extra space that might be needed to access it, for example.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're just about almost through with these examples. So this is an example of um that by right eight hundred square feet, you know, because it exceeds the MFA, it's a detached um ADU um on a larger lot. So in this case, the larger lots are going to be able to accommodate, you know, a little bit easier, you know, the the ADUs where a property owner doesn't necessarily want to put it above um the garage. And then, oh, I think that was our last one. Our last example.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was uh helpful, Lisa. Thank you for running through those. This is good to get a visual on what we're up to here.
Yeah, certainly, certainly illustrates the potential impact that we're gonna have to absorb in order to obtain this additional housing. We're we're going to hear about it when they uh, when when these structures go up. So it's great to have it be illustrated so that uh we know what we're getting into.
Yeah, terrific. I agree. I think we, you know, eight hundred feet will notice that, depending how it ends up on that lot.
Yeah.
Uh, very good. Any other final questions of staff, or should we open it up for a public hearing? Uh, Sarah, do we have uh callers waiting for us on on public hearing?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, I will just reiterate for everyone, um, if you would like to comment before the commission this evening, uh, please uh do, and the best way is to dial three zero one seven one five. I had it there in front of me. Let me get my own.
Here we go.
Thank you, yeah. Three oh one seven one five eight five nine two, and then you'll be prompted for a meeting ID, and that's two three eight two six two zero two seven. And uh Lisa, please leave this screen up while we're in um public comment. Uh, so with that, we'll hear from our uh first uh caller, Sarah.
Caller ending in seven three zero.
Uh, hello?
Hi.
Yeah, hi. You're recognized to uh speak before the commission. Thank you and welcome.
Well, thank you for being there. I have three questions regarding a junior ADU.
And I'm sorry, if you could just state your name, uh, and and.
My name is.
Yeah, just your name and and that, if you're a resident of San Carlos or not.
I am a resident. My name's Karen Mathia.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Um, my first question is, can a a junior ADU have a stove, or is it limited to a toaster oven and microwave?
Um, you know, we are actually going to get to those definitions in great detail in just a bit in our deliberations, so uh we will be working on that in this meeting.
Okay. And then does it need its own address? Or does it share the address of the property?
Uh, that is a good question. Uh, staff, have you uh considered how the address will be handled on these?
I have no idea.
Uh, through the chair, just really quickly, um, the minimum required for a JDU are are those appliances, but certainly if a property owner wanted to put in a full cooking range, you know, they're not, they're not prohibited from doing so. And then with respect uh to the addresses, uh, I don't have an answer for you uh this evening, but they are intended to be the the state, I believe in the definition, and we can pull up those definitions again, is that they are independent uh living facility. Um, so we we could work with our building official to to determine what is the basic criteria for obtaining your own address. But that's not something that is um set forth in the zoning ordinance per se, but it would be something that we could work with uh the building, uh, the building official on.
Okay. Uh, this is.
And then how does it, how does a junior ADU affect property taxes?
Well, we don't have an answer to the property taxes this evening, because that is not our purview. Um, that would be something that um one could investigate further with the county assessor's office.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And through the chair, I believe, Sadhi, if you had a clarification, maybe now is the best time to hear it.
Yeah, so I'm go- going back to the question um about the address, so according to twenty-one elements, uh, they're saying no additional address is required on the property if it's a JDU because there is an interior connection.
So they would share the mailbox?
Um, and I I think they have, they have flexibility, so if it's not required, but if the homeowner would like to um get get an address, I think there's some flexibility there.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Uh, do we have any other callers wishing to comment this evening?
One more caller. Caller ending in zero three one.
Uh, did someone just join the meeting?
Hi, yes, this is Byron Hill. Um, thanks again for for taking my call. Um, the, this has been a really interesting discussion tonight. Um, I think my understanding is that uh if the ADU, proposed ADU is part of the existing structure, or part of the primary residence, um, that it should comply with uh all of the kind of setback height requirements um that exist for that primary residence. Um, my question is whether there could be consideration given uh if the adjacent property is not a single-family residence. So for example, maybe it's a school or a fire station or some other commercial property um where uh where there's setback rules or other that are in place. Um, you know, specifically so that neighboring properties uh don't feel like there's, you know, big buildings, but if it's not a single-family residence uh next door, uh whether there's any uh process for approvals in that respect.
Through the chair, if if you would like staff to try and answer some of these questions now.
Yeah, I I think it's fine to, you know, if if there's an answer that occurs to staff, that's great. Um, you know, uh, if there isn't, um, you know, that's understandable as well. So, yeah, feel free.
Sure, I I I think we can help um provide some clarity on the question. It's a good question. Uh, so the way that our development standards work is they're really designed to regulate development um on a particular property within a particular zone. So even though um an adjacent parcel could be of a different use, such as a school or fire station, or could be of a different zone, um, that does not really bear any weight or or um cause the other wa- the standards that are otherwise set in in place to be deviated from. And it really has to do with um sort of kind of looking at the city down the line. It's not always presumed that um one use is going to stay the same forever or could potentially be rezoned five or ten years down the line. So the way that our rules um are are applied to property, it it really applies uniformly to every parcel under that zoning district. And it and it um And it, and it, um, doesn't, the, the only time where there could be, um, it's not really a deviation from the rules. But for example, if there were, um, say a single family home, a two-story, single family home next to another two-story family home where you wanted to convert a portion to an ADU or modify some windows or entrances, then you want to take into account where those openings are placed on adjacent lots, simply to be a good neighbor and to address some pri, privacy concerns. But in cases where, you know, maybe the adjacent use is a school and the building is set further away, then maybe that particular parcel that wants to build a second, an ADU above it, um, can have some more flexibility with where they put those openings because the use next door is such that it, it provides, um, some options and you're not constrained by any development that might be right up against the property line. So I hope that clarifies, uh, the question. But unfortunately, we don't take, um, that into consideration, um, when applying the basic standards.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, thank you for your comment. Uh, Sarah, anyone else on the line?
No callers at this time.
And Sarah, if I, I don't, you may be muted. We're not hearing you. Um, if you could just let us know when you're letting someone new on the line and there's any way to announce them, that would be preferred.
Yes, no callers at this time.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, let's pause for a minute to see if any final callers want to join us. And again, the process to provide a comment is to dial in three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Meeting ID two three eight two six two zero two seven. So we'll take a couple of seconds here.
This is Don. While we're waiting, I just want to express my appreciation to the commission members and particularly the staff for all the work they've put in, in on this. Uh, we're able to think of questions to ask and almost invariably you come up with an answer right on the tip of your tongue. It's, I'm just amazed at your professionalism. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Um, I think it's, uh, terrific how much the city is getting done in this very trying time. So appreciate that from everyone. All right. Seeing no additional callers, um, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing on this item.
So moved.
I second that motion. This is David.
Uh, terrific. Uh, all in favor of closing public hearing on, on this item, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Hearing none, uh, public hearing is now closed on this item. Great. Um, so commissioners, we can now deliberate.
Well, I'll start off. This is Don. And, um, all the details we've worked on tonight here, I think are important. But I'd like to take a step back before this new law went into effect. Several other laws, uh, along the same lines were proposed by Scott Weiner of San Francisco, as you probably all know. And what it, basically what it does to California is take local planning and zoning authority away from cities and counties and gives it all to the state. Um, I'm a liberal. Uh, I believe in planning, but, uh, in a way, planning is socialism in the, in a, in a good way. That it helps people, uh, determine how they live in their own community and their own piece of property without offending other people too severely. There's always, always, uh, reactions and sometimes unanticipated consequences of these law, laws. And when somebody, when, uh, you know, the state, any state passes a law or any country like this, it, it, it has tremendous effect. And planning and zoning law is a hundred years old, actually older. But in nineteen twenty-six, uh, there was a case that went to the US Supreme Court around Cleveland. It was called Euclid versus Amber Realty. And it established that cities had the right or obligation to do planning, local planning and zoning authority. And this, to me, is reversing that hundred-year-old Supreme Court case. So we are, it's not, we can pass this. I don't want to be an obstructionist. I'm a team player. But, uh, I have a lot of misgivings about this as a planning commissioner and as a planner and a planning professor over the years. This is an astounding, uh, step, uh, toward, I, I've worked, taught in, uh, in Korea and China and seen what, uh, the communist parties can do by, um, federal planning. And it's pretty scary because they're both ending up with so many vacancies after these built. That won't happen here because we've got the economy to support it. But maybe we shouldn't, uh, we, it's difficult to look at this and say, well, this is going to help the homeless or the poverty-stricken or the, uh, disadvantaged or disabled people in our society. So I have misgivings about it. I don't want to abstain and I don't want to, uh, vote to disapprove it because we have to get it approved by the state. But it's, to me, it's a big loss, uh, for local planning and zoning authority. Sorry I went on so long that I couldn't hold myself back. Thanks. Can put you all to sleep, huh?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, uh, interesting perspective, Don. I mean, I agree. Uh, state mandates can be hard to grapple with when they just land on us. Uh, personally, I find, um, ADUs a lot more agreeable than, you know, mandates for seven-story apartment complexes up and down El Camino or whatever the, uh, SB fifty was going to be. Um, ADUs, I think, are important, valuable public policy. Uh, they, um, i- in a way, you know, we do have a housing crisis. I've, I've said this a couple of times that, um, you know, I love the balance and the character of San Carlos and I, I don't want that to change. Uh, but the balance of that is I also am a father of three children and do wonder where they will live someday. Um, and that's the tension I think we all share in these roles is to try to help the community, um, understand and, and achieve some balance around those tensions. And, uh, ADUs I find quite interesting because, uh, they do offer, uh, the potential, uh, to provide quite a bit of more housing in, in the city and, and specifically housing where people need it. Meaning if you need more housing options in your family, you now have the ability to construct that on your own property. That seems like a very good thing. Um, and the impacts of that are quite distributed as opposed to, uh, you know, a seventy-two-foot apartment complex or condo complex next door. Um, these ADUs become, uh, pretty well distributed around the city. So I, 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 and, and from that perspective, I find myself supporting ADUs in general as a policy. But of course, that's not where we find ourselves this evening. As Don pointed out, it is a state mandate. Um, so all we're doing is, uh, trying to fit that state mandate into our fine city. So that's, that's where we find ourselves. But, um, uh, so I do think it's important, uh, that we make sense of it. And, uh, to me, that boils down to two major areas. First, how does it actually intersect with our, uh, maximum floor area and lot coverage ratios? Uh, and being specific around that. And then also, um, um, the, uh, uh, the exact definition of what constitutes an ADU and a JDU. Uh, to make sure, uh, you know, I'm not sure a toaster oven does it for me on the JDU, but, uh, we'll get to that. Um, so a, a, unless someone else wants to move in a different direction, I, you know, I think we should probably tackle first just exactly how this thing intersects with our MFA and, uh, uh, lot coverage ratios. To, to my mind, um, the, the, the question there, as I'll frame it, is, um, how should we think of the eight hundred square foot mandate? Um, I don't like things to be, um, uh, you know, uh, difficult to navigate when it comes to this sort of thing. So I, I can see arguments on both sides of whether the eight hundred square feet should just be an exception, no matter how the planning process has wound its way through, um, for ADUs, um, whether the house is built first or the ADU is, is, uh, you know, um, completed and then the house wants to be added on to subsequently, um, you know, uh, uh, an argument could be made that we want to embrace, uh, the ability of people to construct ADUs. So, uh, we support eight hundred square feet, whether it, it's built now or later. And we're okay with the house, uh, otherwise, you know, being, uh, up to its housing envelope under our MFA and lot coverage. And then you get eight hundred feet for your ADU. Um, uh, so, you know, the other side of that is, um, boy, if you're smart and you have a good architect, you can certainly achieve that. Um, but if you're silly enough to, uh, build your ADU first, don't come back to us looking for a, a, a house as big as your neighbor because, uh, you know, we don't like these big houses. And if you weren't thoughtful enough or didn't have a smart enough architect, uh, you're, you're, you know, never going to be as big as your neighbor. That strikes me as a little arbitrary, but, um, you know, I am sensitive of the fact eight hundred square feet is, is quite a bit. And we spent a lot of time on the MFA, uh, uh, housing mass, uh, restrictions. So anyway, kind of long-winded. That's how I sort of frame it in my mind. How do you guys react to that?
David Groof here. I, I agree, um, the order of building, um, doesn't, shouldn't have an impact. And it seems the scenario where somebody built an ADU first is going to be a fairly rare occurrence. There's not that many, um, unbuilt lots where that sort of situation can come up. But in any case, the, uh, the order, to me, it seems reasonable if the order could be either way.
Um, Jim Yocapone here. Uh, maybe, uh, John, could you just clarify? Could you articulate what would a different scenario be from what's been proposed? Because I, I must admit I'm not, uh, tracking with what you're sharing.
Okay. Um, yeah, as I understand it, and, and there might, as proposed, we might still be a bit vague on this. And I'm mostly proposing that we're not vague in any way because I just don't think in this particular area, we should be vague at all. Um, so the issue is, there's a state mandate that you have to allow uh, up to eight hundred square feet of exemption from MFA and lot coverage to, uh, achieve an ADU. So if you have already built your house to the maximum billing envelope, uh, you then are allowed eight hundred, uh, additional feet of lot coverage and MFA to, um, add your ADU. However, say you're shy of your full envelope and you build an eight hundred square foot ADU, you can then not add on to your house such that you end up with that additional eight hundred feet. You will then be held to your lot coverage and MFA, I think. And I am pointing out that that seems a bit arbitrary and, uh, you know, punishes anyone who doesn't go right up to their full max on the house. Um, and in fact, probably creates an incentive that, uh, every architect will say, boy, you better, uh, build your full envelope right now because you'll never be able to add to that, uh, in the future. So that's, that, that would be a reason to just say eight hundred square feet for ADUs are always exempted from lot coverage and, and, uh, uh, floor area ratio. Did, did that make sense? Should I say it even? I mean, it, it's whether it's always an exemption or if it's only an exemption if it's being added on to a house that's already at the max.
Yeah. May, maybe if, if, um, I could ask, uh, Lisa Porras, um, Lisa, the intent of the way it was written is, is or in your mind or is not what, uh, our chair just described?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is a very good discussion and I do think it's important to get, um, some clarity on it. And it, and it's one of the things that, that we did discuss. So I think in cases where you already have your house and it's already at MFA or perhaps even beyond MFA because it's legal non-conforming, was built 10 years ago before we had the MFA. And you wanted to build an ADU. Yes, you can, but you're limited to eight hundred. If you can fit eight hundred on your lot, great, you can go ahead and do that. But it's a maximum of up to eight hundred square feet. And my understanding of the conversation or the clarity that's requested now is that what if a property owner was not at MFA and wanted to build an ADU, um, but let, let, let's say, I don't know, it's hard to come up with scenarios off the top of my head, but let's.
Let's say they built a thousand-foot ADU.
Yeah, say they built a thousand square foot or they wanted to build a thousand, uh, um, they would need to do that. The way that it's, it's expected is that they would, in order to get that thousand square foot ADU, um, then they have to do it in a way or it needs to be accomplished in a way where they're not exceeding the MFA um, in total, whether it's, um, occupied by the primary house or, or ADU. If they, if it is exceeded, then they're limited, they need to bring it down to eight hundred square feet. And so, um, my understanding is that if, if they had some additional square footage where they could add on to the, um, main house where they already have, you know, built, proposed and built an ADU that was beyond eight hundred square feet, then they wouldn't be able to add on to their primary house because they have an ADU that's beyond eight hundred square feet. So because of the fact that the ADU is bigger than eight hundred square feet, then if we allow them to max out their primary house, we'd, we'd be creating a situation that would not conform to the code and the state requirement to limit that ADU to eight hundred square feet. Does that make sense? And if Andrea, you want to jump in and describe it differently?
Yeah, I, I think what, um, maybe you're asking is that in that example, if there's a thousand square foot ADU, the question is what if we exempt eight hundred of that? So in the future, you know, only two hundred of it's going to count towards MFA and the balance can go to the house. So regardless of, um, you know, if you want to build a two-bedroom ADU, that's a thousand square feet. You need to have at least two hundred square feet left on your MFA because that will count. Anything eight hundred and less won't count towards MFA regardless of whether it's built before or after the house. Is I think what you're asking about. Because under the current, what's proposed, the order does matter.
Yeah.
And, and maybe, maybe what, um, e- each of the voices here, the commissioners are suggesting is if there's a way to sharpen the language so that that is clear, then I think. Then I think it will be unambiguous for those applying, and we'll have the confidence that we. Kept our, the intent of our floor area ratio work and also lived within the requirements of the state law.
And if I could add one thing, just sort of as we were running through scenarios. If let's say you had, um, four hundred square feet left on to max out your MFA. The state law says you can have, you know, an eight hundred square foot ADU. So our thought process with this was in that scenario. You could only bu- you could build an eight hundred square foot ADU, but the second you go over the MFA. You know, you're limited, so you're really only going over your MFA by four hundred square feet, not by an additional eight hundred.
And, and you'll never be able to achieve that final four hundred, although your neighbor with the better architect will be able to achieve it. And the concern, of course, is this now means everyone's gonna feel like they have to fully max out. When they have it open, because it's kinda like use it or you lose it forever. So. Um, kinda my, my broader point is it's complicated. Um, and, and a little vague, as you can all see, just as we're trying to struggle to even describe it. So I, I, you know, I, I certainly. You know, want to respect our MFA restrictions, but I just don't like things being arbitrary and hard to understand and explain. So I think I would maybe propose, wondering, you know, I'd like input on this, but maybe propose just being. Flat out, eight hundred square feet of ADU is excluded from MFA. And lot coverage ratio, just boom, there it is. Whether you use it upfront or use it later. You get eight hundred feet, uh, for your ADU, at least so it's clear and understandable. And everyone doesn't have to go through that gyration of thought that we've been struggling with for ten minutes.
I like that idea, a- and one of the reasons I'm, I'm really supportive of it being super clear. Is I'm really in favor of this streamlined approval process. And once you lock thirty days or whatever it is off the approval process. The way you do that is to make the criteria and the rules really clear. And so I really appreciate distilling this down to several very clear sentences. So that this streamlined approval happens, and it happens every time.
Good point.
Yeah, through the chair, uh, we can certainly make that clarification, that up to eight hundred square feet. Composed of ADU would be excluded from MFA and lot coverage requirements.
Okay, it sounds like we have consensus on that, so I appreciate that. And then the corollary is, I would also wanna just be very clear and have a sentence to this effect. That JDUs are not excluded from MFA and lot coverage ratio. And I understand the one fifty provisos, someone can point out, and they can work through the planning process on that. But otherwise, I think we should be very clear and just say JDUs are not exempted from MFA and lot coverage ratios. Does, does everyone agree with that?
I do.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Sounds like we have some consensus on that. Then the, uh, the second major item, and then I'll, I'll let you guys take it from, from there. But, um, I think we should, Lisa, if you can pull up the definitions of ADU and JDU. I just, it feels like we have a little bit of work to do there, to me. And the, uh, so as I'm looking at this, um. I think the only one that jumps out to me at the ADU is the shove slash top, uh, shower slash tub. Just because I, that, that's kind of vague, and I certainly appreciated Don's comment. And I don't think anything we're doing here would limit, um, the ability to put in a tub or anything that you wanted. Uh, but I think as far as setting a minimum definition of an ADU, I think we should just say shower. I don't think we should in any way apply a tub as mandatory, uh, because lots of good designed. A lot of well-designed bathrooms do not include tubs anymore.
I would be happy if we could get the word minimum in there. That we're clarifying what's in the parentheses, sink, toilet, shower, to shower, or the minimum. So that therefore, if you want a shower and a tub, or you, et cetera. Just the define, right now it doesn't say that it's the minimum, and it could be taken to mean that's the exact specification.
Perhaps just put in shower, comma, tub.
But that would, that would solve it for that ex- that example, but, um. If, if they wanna have a bidet in there, they could, um, it's, uh. So these are the minimum, the minimums, not the, um.
Okay.
You can go above that, and we wouldn't be able to anticipate. Any, all the possibilities that a person might want to do beyond the minimum and specify them.
Sorry, David. May- maybe just to check, uh, David and John. In the scenario that Don was speaking, if someone were to construct this ADU. And the, the sanitation facility were only a tub. Are you suggesting that that's, uh, in, in line with what you're proposing? Or that would not pass your threshold?
No, I, I don't, I just don't want, uh, the walk-in tubs being, uh. Not permitted, but I think some, uh, Andrea perhaps cleared. Cleared the language up when we went back to page ninety-nine or whatever it was. And said that doesn't apply to all ADUs or JADUs. I just was tired when I first read it, but I was alerted, well, why, why couldn't someone have a tub? And particularly a walk-in tub if they needed it.
Yeah, and Don, that, that was, um, I, a, a bit confusing, but that in no way was talking about ADUs or J. Or JDUs, that, that I forget now, but that provision was about. Um, if it's not an ADU, it can't have a tub. Uh, so.
Yeah.
Like I don't, you don't have to worry about that, um, but I think. Being more clear with this language that this is a minimum, and you can certainly add the tub that you're talking about. Um, Don, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of that, if anyone can think of the wordsmithing that would make that more clear. Um, but to answer your question, Jim, I, I do think a shower should be required. Um, to just have a tub doesn't strike me as particularly functional in this day and age.
Some older people can't take showers, but they rely on walk-in tubs.
Of course, and, and they certainly can have a walk-in tub, but there should also be a showerhead in there for. You know, the next person who's gonna move in, my, you know, almost everyone, I, you know.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
And through the chair, we do always have the ability, um, to allow for exceptions under, uh, the ADA laws. So if for some reason there needed to be a special, you know, bathtub that, you know, didn't have a shower for, for reasons like that. We could always make that exception as well.
Well, I, I appreciate that Andrea, but I wanna be very clear, we're not needing any exceptions. We're defining a minimum standard here. It has to include these things. But you're otherwise free to design and add and make it as great as you want, or add something that's not even invented yet. Um, we're just saying, if you're gonna call it an ADU and get this extra eight hundred square feet. It's gotta have a sink, a toilet and a shower. And you can have four bathtubs next to it of any flavor or variety you want, but it's gotta have a sink, a toilet and a shower.
And, and I apologize, I should clarify, I, I, I was referring to the, um, section of the code that talks about accessory units that are not. AD, so for example, a poolhouse currently wouldn't allow a bathtub, but if, if someone needed it for, you know, an ADA reason. We could always provide that exception as well.
I see, okay. But we're, we're really talking about the ADU definition here. Are we all, is the, it shall include, are we, is that strong enough language to make this out as a minimum definition? Is there a better way we should?
I don't see the word minimum in here, but, um.
Sure, how about it shall include at a minimum, permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation. Sink, at least a sink, toilet and shower, and, and remove the slash tub. It's that, that's what I'm reacting to, I just think slash tub, it doesn't define anything, that, that's just confusing.
So you could say at least a sink, toilet and shower.
Sure.
Through the chair, if I may, um, I, again, all in the spirit of clarity here. Because someone could propose a bathtub with a showerhead and say, oh, look, but this is function and says it's a shower. Um, would it be appropriate to say separate shower? Like a standalone shower? I, I think that's.
I mean, no, I think I'm perfectly fine with a shower tub combo. I just don't wanna require a shower tub combo. A standalone shower is enough, that's what I'm saying.
Got it.
So, okay, so it sounds like we have consensus that. That aspect should just say at least a sink, toilet and shower, and no mention of a tub there, correct? Are we all on board with that?
Well, I.
Yes.
I'll go along with it, but I, I think it would be clearer if we. Mention all of them, but not necessary.
Well, the, the problem, Don, is if we mention tub, then it will require a tub. And I don't think we wanna require a tub in every case.
No, no.
We could use the word or.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I actually don't want just a tub. I don't think it's just a tub without a shower is functional. Uh, you know, that could be a jacuzzi then, right?
But may- maybe that comes down then to personal choice, right? Because the purpose is, um, for providing a way to get clean. So just.
Yeah, some.
I mean, is that right? Can you even build a house without a shower in this, in this city, Lisa?
I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. If, if one wanted to just. Provide a bathroom with just a tub and no shower. I don't think there's any requirement that there would be a shower, um.
I, I've seen that once in my life, and it was a hotel in Venice, and I had to like stick my head under a faucet. I mean, it was like, I, I have never been anywhere that had a tub and no shower. And I just, I, I, is that really something we wanna allow for?
I'm cracking up because.
Frankly, I, I'm gonna say, I think we're probably working it maybe a little too hard.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm willing to move on.
Yeah, let's please move on.
At minimum, a shower, and certainly if someone wants to include a tub, they may do so, but at minimum, the shower is what's.
So the, the, it'll say at least a sink, toilet and shower.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take care of it.
My, my only other, and, and jump in, I'm not trying to dominate this thing, please do jump in. I'm just, there's a lot of ground to cover here, um, refrigerator, we talked about this. Oh, well, thank you, Don, I feel like I'm talking too much, so shut me up.
No, no. Good point.
The, uh, and, and our study session, I think we might have even achieved consensus. That we felt like it needed to be a full-size refrigerator to be in, in ADU.
Yeah, I remember that. We were, we didn't want a bar sink and a wine refrigerator. Although for me, I could go with a bar sink or a wine refrigerator, if they had a cooktop or a range. So for me, the important part of that sentence is cooktop or range. That really sort of sets the function of the room as a kitchen. Um, but I do like the idea, and I'd be a supportive of saying it has to be a real refrigerator.
I mean, the standard I'm trying to hold here is, is this viable housing a young family could move into or not, right? And, and if, if we're allowing for a wine fridge. And, you know, like a single, uh, burner cooktop, I mean, I just, you know. It doesn't strike me as we're building effective housing and, and achieving the goal that we want to here. Um, and that's why I think full-size refrigerator for an ADU. And maybe allow the minim- you know, a smaller one for a J, JDU, but, um. I, I personally, I think an ADU should have a full-size refrigerator, and, I mean. I guess we can leave a cooktop or range. I would be up for making it a, you know, a four-burner cooktop, but. What do you guys think about all that?
I'm a little, I'm a little less concerned about the specifications for the. What bothers me the most is, is the portability of a microwave toaster oven or hot plate. Those, they're not an integral part, they're just something sitting on the counter. So to me, that's, um, that's asking for a, a temporary, uh, pass the inspection. If we start getting into the, the cubic feet of refrigerator size. Uh, that seems a little hard to, uh, for us as the planning commission to define what, what's an acceptable, what's not. Uh, burners, maybe you could say multiple burner or something, but, um. To me, I would like to see a permanent, um, a permanent cooking appliance, um, not the, not the plug-in. That's my minimum.
And I guess I'd be okay with an under-counter refrigerator. I don't like, um, they're little, but I. Maybe you're thinking that those also are full-size, and I'd be okay with a two-burner cooker. I just like the idea that it's, um, to David's point, it's not portable. It's built in.
Yeah. I guess I was sort of thinking we'd want more of a real kitchen in the ADU, and we could allow the two-burner. Tiny fridge and the JDU. That seemed kinda like a natural break, but, um. I just, you know, if we really want this to be housing stock, I don't know who wants to live with a three-foot refrigerator, you know?
Good point.
That, that's true.
I'm just trying to make sure these definitions support the goal, which is providing additional meaningful housing in our town. And not allowing someone to put a bar in and steal eight hundred extra feet out of the MFA. That, that's, that's what I'm trying to guard against with this stuff.
Agreed.
Uh, through the chair, I'm, I'm just looking through, um. The state law to try to find, uh, some clarity, and there isn't much, but looking at other jurisdictions, almost all of them. Note that for JDUs, uh, the cooking facility. We can only require cooking facilities with appliances that do not require more than a hundred twenty volts natural or propane gas. And I'm not, I don't see that in the state law, but it seems to be in other cities, um, codes. So it could be something we would need to check on to make sure that's not called out somewhere.
Okay. Well, if, if we have, I think saying full-size refrigerator is adequate enough. It can be a smallish, full-size refrigerator, but the point is, there's a thirty-inch gap in the counter. And you gotta put a refrigerator in it. It's not a below-the-counter wine fridge.
And maybe the addition to that with, uh, Ellen's point is built-in cooktop or range.
Sure, yeah.
That's a good idea. Just add the word built-in. Yeah, Jim, good idea.
I would like built-in, but the hundred and twenty volt may, uh, be a pretty small selection of built-in hundred and twenty volt cooktops.
Well, let's, let's stay in the, I, I think we're in the ADU definition here. Why don't we, we, we're kinda jumping. Why, why don't we stay in the ADU definition? So what I, what I just heard was. Full-size refrigerator and a built-in cooktop or range. Is that, is everyone comfortable with that as def- defining ADU?
And a sink.
Well, right, yeah, that's already there. Yeah, so the sentence would be at a minimum, the kitchen shelf contain a sink, full-size refrigerator. And either a built-in cooktop or built-in range.
How about built-in microwave oven?
Well, we're, that, that's down in JDU. That's allowed in the JDU. In the ADU, we wanna see a real cooktop. Don't we? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes they're separate, the ovens and the.
Well, again, this is a minimum.
This is a, yeah, they can.
Absolutely add the microwave or, you know, do a full kitchen, do a chef's kitchen here. But at a minimum, it's gotta have a sink, a full size refrigerator and either a built in cooktop or built in range.
Um, I have a question for staff, um, on ADU and reflecting to the very last phrase on the JADU. Is there any thought as to why the phrase as well as food preparation counter and storage cabinets aren't reflected in both instances?
I, I think it could be, um, I believe it was added to the JDU definition to get around the idea of just a wet bar. Um, so it could be added to both for consistency, uh, as well.
Yeah, you did such a good job. Let's capture it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, Jim. Thank you. That's a good ad.
There's also a missing parentheses under J, under the JDU definition, so it was hard for me to understand where the microwave toaster oven and what was in a, what was in parentheses? With the microwave toaster oven and the hot plate.
Oh, the print, I'm sorry about that. Um, Commissioner Garvey, imagine the parentheses right before the EG.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I think we're done on ADU. Um, and, and I like that ad Jim about the food prep counter and storage cabinets. I think we have consensus on that. So for JDU, um, I agree, um, with Commissioner Roof that something that you can just pick up and walk away with or, you know, unplug that microwave from your kitchen the day the inspector's showing up and go put it on your bar counter and call it a JDU. Um, you know, I don't like that. The, um, so I think the constraint is, I don't even know, do they make built in built in cooktops or ranges that are a hundred and ten volt?
Yeah, that may be, uh, it may be a pretty limited range of products there.
The, uh, yeah, let me.
I mean, clearly the, the state is trying to stop us from throwing up technical hurdles to, um,
Yeah.
to build a, a JDU, um, and so that's understandable. But on the other hand, we need to get a real enough kitchen that, that we're eliminating the, uh.
You know, it actually works. I'm on HomeDepot.com and I see a couple dozen and they tend to be two burner cooktops that are one ten volt. So I think that works nicely, actually. And that seems to be two burners only need one ten. And if, you know, if you get up to four burners, then it goes into the two twenty. So there, we're legislating on the fly here.
So they can or cannot have gas burners?
Uh, they can have anything. We're defining the minimum requirement to meet the definition of a JDU. So they, they can, they could have a chef cook, you know, I mean, they, they could do anything in this kitchen, but at a minimum it's gotta have at least a built in cooktop or range.
Does it have to have a refrigerator? I don't see a refrigerator here. I think at least an under counter refrigerator would be.
I agree.
I agree as well, yeah.
I agree as a minimum.
Yeah, okay.
So this, I think would be an efficiency kitchen is required, which much, must include a sink, a cooking facility with a built in cooktop or built in range. A refrigerator as well as a food preparation counter and storage cabinets. I think that's the sentence. Did I miss anything?
That should do it.
That sounds good.
Uh, through the chair, I would just like for staff to take a minute and, um, make sure that we understand the modification and to also clarify, um, the additional language concerning a cooktop. Um, I just want to make sure that doesn't go beyond the minimum.
It can say one ten volt cooktop, at least one ten volt or. And I, I don't know if we have to say that. I, I think just saying a built in cooktop is fine because we know there are one ten volt cooktops available, so they can achieve the state mandate. But Andrea, maybe you could, if it's there, can you read the state mandate to make sure we're meeting it with regard to the cooktop? I just can't believe a toaster oven, like, you know, that just give me a break.
And, uh, through the chair, to be clear, I didn't find it in the state law. I just found it in the city. All of the cities seem to have the same requirement. Um, but it says, let's see. A kitchen that has cooking appliances that do not require natural gas, propane or electrical service greater than a hundred and twenty volts.
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Sure. Uh, so a kitchen that has cooking appliances that do not require natural gas, propane or electrical service greater than a hundred and twenty volts.
Okay, great. Yeah, we're fine. We can definitely require a built in cooktop or built in range because those are available at one ten volt. So, great. Um, so the sentence would be an efficiency kitchen is required, which must include a sink, a cooking facility with built in cooktop or built in range, a refrigerator as well as a food preparation counter and storage cabinets, period. Does that work for everyone?
Works for me.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
So, in reading the overall paragraph, another thought, it says must contain separate entrance. Does that need to be an exterior entrance?
It's a good point, really, yeah. And I think it should say exterior there. I agree.
The ADU definition doesn't seem to talk about an entrance. Does, does that word need to go up in the ADU definition?
I, I completely agree, David. Great point.
Both of them should require it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's important to make it a independent living situation.
So the parenthetical is must contain a separate external entrance. And that parenthetical goes in both definitions.
My sense is that entrance sort of implies you're coming in from the outdoors as opposed to just walking down the hallway, but.
Maybe, but.
Yeah.
This is such a gray area because this is also the configuration which, you know, you can into someone else's house and use their bathroom, right? If you choose to set it up that way, so it's.
Yeah, it's a little, the, yeah, the exterior entrance. If you're on the second story, a, a separate exterior entrance may be hard to, um,
Well, that's where you get the extra hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. We're throwing a lot at you, Lisa, but you think you have this in a way you'll be able to repeat it when we get around to the resolution?
Uh, I think so. Um, I think what I heard is that you wanted to make clarifications about the food preparation encounter and storage cabinets for both definitions. I definitely, um, got your, um, modified description of the cooking facility for the JDU. A cooking facility with built in cooktop or range, a refrigerator as well as food preparation, so on and so forth. And, um, and then clarification that the entrance needs to be external in both definitions. Is that right?
Yes, and the built in cooktop or built in range in the JDU. Did you say that?
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Cooking facility with built in cooktop or range. And, um, and let's see. So Judy or Andrea, did you want to comment on any of that for the JDU?
No, I think you've got it.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think we can extrapolate on that because what the state law says, I'm looking at it at the memo right now. And thank you, SuJudy, for, um, directing me to this. Um, the cooking facility, you know, with appliances. So I think what the commission is really doing is clarifying what they mean by that cooking facility. So the state basically says cooking facility with appliances. So I think we're just um, elaborating on that a bit more that it's built in.
Yeah, and the only constraint from the state is that we can't require two twenty volt appliances. But there are built in ranges and quite a number of them available, uh, that are only one ten volt.
Well, I guess a two twenty appliance could go in. The one, the one ten is the floor, right? Not the max.
Exactly, exactly.
And through the chair, just to clarify, um, for the ADU definition going along those same lines, could the cooktop or range within this definition also be interpreted to mean a two, you know, a two, a two spot range?
Yeah, I, you know, I'd push the, I, you know, I actually wouldn't mind seeing it be required at, at four burners, but I don't think we had consensus on that. Um, unless we want to revisit that.
Yeah, I, I think I wouldn't, um, need to push it that far.
Uh, I, I would agree, I think, um, you know, and by the way, I, I'm with you, John. I, I'd prefer to know it was a proper kitchen. And I'm really a, a bit torn. If the bar goes so high, um, I just, um, am concerned that we won't get, um, it might inhibit on the other side. So it feels like we're in, in that right uncomfortable and acceptable zone.
Okay, yeah. So well, yes, the answer is yes. Someone could do a two burner, one ten in the ADU. Cause it's a built in cooktop.
Agree.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I thi- I think we have that. We'll have to repeat it here in a little bit, but I think we got it. Okay, anything else, uh, you guys want to deliberate on?
I had one area I think is worth discussion, discussing, and that is the requirement for, um, the same materials and color to be used for the ADU. Which, um, um, I'm somewhat torn over. It, it's partly because I, I read an article that there's businesses that are contemplating, um, making prefabricated ADUs that they can plunk in your backyard. And so, um, just trying to think through the implications of a requirement for the same materials and color that may inhibit that sort of a, an approach, which for better or for worse, I'm not sure. But, um, but that would be requiring the same, so if you have a stucco house, presumably your, um, your ADU would also have to be stucco. And I, you know, we mentioned earlier in the meeting, there's some latitude there, but, um, on the other hand, I'd be a little worried if, um, if you could just put a, um, like a mobile home, you know, plunk a mobile home in the backyard and call it an ADU, that, that's probably not what we're aiming for. So, um, so it.
I just think there's anything to prohibit it.
Yeah.
Well, that, well, there is. If you're saying the materials have to be.
Yes.
The same, then, uh, you know, then you can't just plunk a mobile home in. So they're.
I, I think, I think the laws use the word substantially. The materials have to be substantially the same. And which gives staff some leeway, I think, in what they approve. What I get back to is, we want a fast approval. I don't want it, it to take two weeks for staff to figure out if you have a stucco house and they want to put in a different material in the back. What other materials are approvable? But this word substantial is, gives you some wiggle room.
Can you put in an aluminum siding, um, prefabricated, um, structure?
Maybe you can if the color tones are very similar to your current color tones in your home.
Yeah, I mean, so that would meet the color, but not the material, but. And I, I, actually, I didn't, I didn't come up with a solution for this. Uh, because I can see, uh, the value of requiring the materials and colors to match, because that's going to be aesthetically much more pleasing. But on the other hand, we don't want to inhibit, um, the efficiency of perhaps, um, um, and also the, um, ability architectural, um, freedom to do something a little bit different. So I'm not sure where I'm landing. I thought it was worth discussing though, because right now, I mean, substantially it gives some wiggle room. But, uh, but it wouldn't, it, it may preclude the business model of having a prefabricated unit that you could put anywhere.
You know, David, maybe the, the part of that phrase that we could think about changing would be the, um, uh, substantially, um, similar. And, and maybe it's substantially consistent with or, um, alike, right? In other words, just giving staff and, a- and the, the homeowner something, uh, that's a little more rope. And, and maybe, you know, maybe that's counter to what we have tried to do, which is create real specificity. But I think your push is the, the tighter the, the chain here, the, the less flexibility homeowners may have to do something which is efficient, attractive and, uh, you know, uh, timely. So. Maybe the question to you is how strongly do you feel about opening this up? Broad, broadening that flexibility for staff.
Yeah. Or discretion.
I'd be happy if we could just say like, color either the same or harmonious to the existing. Materials could be the same way.
So Li- Lisa, Lisa, how, how much latitude do you think? Uh, y- y- you would want given this dialogue?
Well, I'm hearing substantially consistent. I, I think what I'm hearing the commission say is that you want to open it up. I'm looking, this is again on packet page twenty four, um, uh, letter F where it's talking about architectural compatibility, where the accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, shall use the same architectural style, exterior materials and colors as the existing or proposed primary dwelling and the same quality of, um, materials.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us that it was same. And I, I think I would propose it would not be same. And I think similar is substantially.
I would say the same or harmonious with.
And through the chair and the commission, we could also say, um, use the word complimentary. Um,
Yeah, I like that.
Complimentary suggests that it could be different, but it's adding value and complements. They complement each other. Cause, um, there are certain elements of, of the building, whether it's window openings or, or siding or a color where, where the ADU, whether attached or detached, could, could be complementing, um, what's, it, what's already existing. So that might be, um, a term that might satisfy this concern, the suggestion?
I think so.
I, I think that's a nice term, but again, kind of in the category of let's be clear on what we're doing. Um, did staff form an opinion on prefab ADUs? Because that is a real thing and there's some cool ones and, you know, you can get them. They look like they dropped right out of Dwell magazine, right? They're modern and slick and I think most people would like them, but do they look like a nineteen fifty five San Carlos house? No. Um, do we want to allow them or do we not want to allow them? I think we should have that discussion and did staff have that discussion?
Yeah, there's, there's the cool dwell type unit. Yeah, there's, there's the cool dwell type units and then there could also be really cheap trailer, uh, trailer type. I suppose, though there's quite a range there.
Yeah.
So through the chair, yes, we've had these discussions and yes, we've had, um, proposals by homeowners who, who have asked the question. As they kind of investigate, you know, these possibilities, um, whether or not the city would allow pre. Pre manufactured or pre, prefabricated, fabricated structures. And the answer to that is yes, but we are not looking for something that's, you know, just out of, um. You know, like an instruction trailer, you know, a temporary instruction trailer. That's, you know, positioned on the property. We basically say it's, we still need to find. That it meets the design review criteria. So it has to, um. It would need to be modified. If, if it's very bare bones and we would want it to be modified. Or dressed up in such a way where it's going to complement the existing architecture, whether by, um. Having a similar openings or a window style, or there's something about the architectural components. That allow it to read together with the main house. And it's, and it's somewhat difficult to put into a zoning standard like one size fits all. Which is in this case, we, we, since these are going to be, you know, potentially. You know, a fair amount of additional square footage added to a property, staff was conservative and suggesting that we, they really wanted to, you know. To follow the existing style that's already there. So at least it's integrated architecturally. But if we want to allow some freedom, then we would need to find some, some common language or some language. That would allow some deviation, but that there'd be some similar elements where, where it can. You know, generally read together, read and, and not be jarring and also to address. The issue where something is really bare bones and, and you know, we're, we're holding it to a higher standard.
And through the chair, if I could, if I could just add to that, uh, the, the code does prohibit. Foam trim plywood and aluminum siding, so that, that wouldn't be allowed, um, straight through the code. Um, but also as an example, we did recently have an ADU that was more contemporary with a house style that was completely different. And, um, we do do different things to try to, you know, like Lisa said, make them read together. So it could be. Window trim, it could be the color, it could be the roof pitch, um. So, you know, following along Lisa's lines, it's hard to sort of narrow that down to one thing. That's similar, but we have in the past worked with owners to, you know, allow two different styles. Um, of an ADU in home and actually have them read together, uh, as well.
So, uh, the phrase same or complimentary. Um, does, does that give staff the flexibility to, to, to allow for? Tasteful prefab units, uh, but yet still enough. Um, leverage over the applicant to make sure it's, it's not a double wide back there.
I think what would allow some of the flexibility, let me just try this out and you guys can let me know what you think, but. Shall use, um, complimentary elements like architectural elements such as. Whether it's the architectural style, maybe it's exterior materials, maybe it's colors or openings. But maybe we can break this down to say that at least you need to have some elements. Within this, this new additional square footage that complements the existing, whether it's by architecture. Openings, uh, materials or color, that, that there's some common thread. But perhaps it doesn't need to meet each and every one of these.
I, I certainly support that. I think we might even have a consensus on that. Do you know what that language would read like?
Okay, let me try. So an, an accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached. Shall use complimentary elements. Um, shall, excuse me, shall use, um. Complementary elements such as the architectural style. Um, exterior materi- materials, colors, maybe I would even include openings. Cause windows obviously can be a common thread or openings of the, um, existing or proposed primary dwelling.
Okay, yeah, I think, but I think leaving same in there is a good as, as well, right? If someone did come in with basically. The same design would want to approve that as well. So, so use the same or complimentary elements. Such as architectural style, exterior materials, openings and colors.
Sure, that would work. E- either the same or some, some complimentary elements such as the following.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on that commissioners?
Yeah, I like that.
I have a question on the state, uh, on the state legislation. Is there anything that prevents tiny houses from being rolled in and hooked up? As well as mobile homes?
As long as it has a built in cooktop or built in range, I think you'd be, I think it can be tiny.
So it can have wheels? I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about that.
Yeah, tiny houses have wheels, but sometimes they take them off, just like trailers become mobile homes. They take the tires off. But that's not what we're looking for here. Tiny houses are about two hundred square foot, I think.
I, I didn't know they had wheels. Um, I think everything we're talking about here has foundation, right? I mean, or something permanent.
That's why I ask if the state is permitting or, or prohibiting. Such as mobile homes and tiny houses.
Yeah.
I think that might.
You're on mute, Lisa.
I think I did the opposite of what I wanted to do. Um, I think that would fall under the definition perhaps of mobile homes, which is not the definition of an ADU. I don't think that was the state's intent. Um, I guess however, if there was a tiny house that could be modified to meet these. The, the definitions as we're proposing them tonight and the architectural compatibility requirement and be. You know, permanently located, then I don't see why we would say no, but I think that's something that we would, um. I don't think necessarily we're saying that, that mobile homes or tiny homes on wheels meet this definition. Andrea, so Judy, this come up with your discussions with twenty one elements?
Uh, not with twenty one elements, um, but from what I can tell, uh, like you just said, if a tiny home. Met all the requirements, uh, it, you know, could be allowed. Um, I don't believe we allow mobile homes now. Um, and from what I can tell from my research, the state does allow cities to regulate them how they see fit.
So it's a good point and to be clear, we're confident. The definition of residential dwelling does not include things with wheels, because that's what it hinges on, right?
Well, what they do is they roll them in on wheels and then take them off, set them on a foundation. But they're still tiny houses or mobile homes. So I guess we have to be prepared to accept them or prohibit them.
Well, it comes to our definition of residential dwelling, I believe, and I don't know if that's defined anywhere in our code. That's the only operative language to that here in these definitions.
Probably the building code, code will say this on this in that any structure has to, um. Meet the building code and that would include a foundation.
Uh, through the chair, looking through, uh, our municipal code, it looks like the key is whether it's, um. Classified as a vehicle or not. Uh, so vehicles are, there's prohibitions on living in those. Um, you know, on a property, uh, but it could be that a tiny house wouldn't necessarily be considered a vehicle. Once it's off the wheels, it's, it's that. Um, so it seems to be within our health and safety section of the code. Which specifically calls out vehicles.
Which I, another thing, Redwood City's having a fight now in other towns about. People living in their RVs on the street overnight, you know, homeless people getting old. Like I have a thirty year old, forty year old now, RV in storage. And I'd give it to a homeless person, but where are they going to park them? Anyway, I, I did, I digress. I hadn't thought of mobile, mobile or RVs. And tiny homes and mobile homes as being a part of the ADU and JDOS. But the, someone will try it probably.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, we have a solid consensus. We, this, these definitions should not apply to vehicles. Or things with wheels or anything that's less than a full residential dwelling. Um, and so it sounds like staff is confident, there's elements. In our municipal code that will not allow someone to. Drive a small home on wheels through these definitions. So, um, if, if staff is confident in that. I, I think we can stop talking about this.
We are, thank you.
Okay.
I'd still like to put it in that it, they're prohibitive. Put it in this documentation that we send to the state. I mean, they might turn us down and say, no, that's not what we want, but.
Wha- what language would you like to add done?
I'd like to say that, uh, tiny homes, mobile homes and recreational, uh, vehicles are prohibited. In, under the ADU or JADU. Definitions.
I would want to, uh, research that to make sure that we're not overstepping some other section of the code. There's probably a section in the municipal code that deals with that already in terms of, um. RVs, you know, trailers, tiny homes on wheels. I think the ADU ordinance is, is, is talking about something else entirely. Um, we could start adding a lot of other things to the ordinance. Um, that, that wouldn't be allowed under, under an ADU ordinance, ordinance. Um, but just to clarify, if somebody had a tiny house or a prefab house. Of a very modest size and they wanted to permanently locate it on the property as an ADU with the foundation. And all the necessary hookups that, um, are required by building, then we would not say no to it. But if it was on wheels, um, that's not something that, it doesn't meet the definition of an ADU or a, or JDU when it's on wheels. I can certainly look into this further and if there is, um, a gap. Or a, a loophole, we can certainly, you know, address it. And take it forth to the council if that's the commission, if that's what the commission would like us to do. At the very least, at the very least, we could bring back an information, I, from informational item to the commission on the matter. So that everyone can be on the same page and understanding the regulations.
Thank you, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, so Lisa, I think our consensus is clear. We, we, we want these to be proper residential dwellings. We don't want these definitions to include anything on wheels. Um, but it could include a prefab, uh, that is, uh, complementary. Elements of architectural style, et cetera, as we discussed. So I, I think our intent is clear on that. Um, if you think anything else needs to be added to meet that intent, um, please do so.
The last note I'd made is the idea of privacy screening being required in some cases was raised. Is that something we want to, um, build in?
By that. Good point. Yeah, I recall the, uh, residential design review committee, I think, raised that issue that if you're going to add the. Extra hundred and fifty feet and for a JDU that you could, uh, consider adding a, a, a privacy screen. Yeah, good point. I had forgotten that.
And wha- what exactly, you mean like, uh, like a high fence? Like what, what is a privacy screen?
And it could be landscaping too.
I mean, yeah. I, I think we already, I mean, we fences are allowed. Do we, we want to mandate fences in front of these things or something?
Well, if it saves privacy and, uh, controversy between neighbors, because. Um, those of you that have been on the RDRC, every, every week, there's people that come to complain about. Uh, somebody putting a two story house on an old one story, you know, tearing it down, building a two story. And they've lost their privacy and daylight and fresh air and, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, they're really angry and you multiply when if we get forty or fifty ADUs a year. Which we're on the track of now, if we got twenty in five months. Uh, there's going to be a lot of angry neighbors.
I, yeah, I certainly hear you and, and, and recognize that concern. Um, I, I was reacting to a privacy screen. I mean, the nature of offenses, either neighbor can put it in, right? And it's not obvious to me. Everyone would want a high fence put in if the other guy doesn't want it. Um. Where, where, where I usually find my, you know, when I, the couple of stints I did on RDRC, it usually came down to, um. You know, windows looking, you know, if you're on a four foot setback on a second floor. Looking down into someone's backyard, that's not, that, you know, that's kind of not cool. Uh, I'm on board with that. So maybe those windows need to be obscured. Is, is that kind of what we're thinking about my way of privacy screening?
Actually, I think the obscured thing is already in the, I, I remember reading that's in there. The, yeah, if it's facing.
Either obscured or, um, have a high sill.
Yes, that's right. Those are the words. So I think that part's in there. You know, with the fast turnaround time on this permit. There may not be time for the RDRC to kind of, uh, broker a, uh, good neighbor, uh, arrangement. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's apply, approve, you know, you're out the doors. Is there even a public notification requirement?
Uh, through the chair, um, ADUs are not required to go through any, um, type of planning process. Again, only when an ADU is proposed in conjunction. Say someone is scraping the lot, the owner knows they want a primary residence, they want an ADU. Then the whole project, the ADU plus the house goes through this, the, the normal, um, timing. For, as a new house would. It's only when the ADU is proposed as a standalone item. You've already got your house, you just want to build an ADU, then you can go straight to building and we're required to get it permitted, planning permitted. Within, um, sixty days. And just to kind of follow up on the i- idea. Of the, um, of the privacy screening. Um, I think it's just a general statement, it would, and it would be up to the designer to, to determine what that is. And that could certainly be, you know, some landscaping. Um, and I think Andrea mentioned that it could be. A trellis, but then we're limited, um. I guess to six feet though, that's true. We're limited to six feet, but my question maybe to Andrea is what about? Say you have, um, an ADU, um, well, if your ADU is on the ground, you know, privacy screening. That can be interpreted to mean things such as landscaping, where staff is already directing some applicants of. Um, ADUs to put in some screening where there's some sensitivity between property lines. Um, and so we've managed to accomplish that, but I think having it in writing puts, um, the. The builder, the owner on notice that in, 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 uh, in certain cases. We're going to want to see that as part of the application, so to be prepared for it. Andrea, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, other than just, you know, the concern with, um, timing. We can also create, like Lisa was saying, some, um, submittal requirements that outline everything that needs to be submitted to help. Um, recuperate some time when it, when it does come through building, um, or even, even through planning. Um, the current privacy measures we have now are related to the balconies and decks, um, as well as stair landings. Um, not being permitted on either, um, rear or side property lines unless it's for egress. Uh, and windows within five feet of the property line, uh, must be obscured or have the high sills to maximize. Privacy for neighbors. Um, so on top of that, we could also require landscaping, um, screening or things like that. Um, as, as you see fit.
Although with a four foot setback, you'd have to be some pretty skinny bushes to get, to get in there. You don't want anything to grow. You don't want anything to grow fat. Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, I but I I just would wanna understand what we mean by privacy screening. I mean, I think the real concern here is a two-floor ADU five feet away from the lot line. Because and and and, you know, and I don't think we're talking about twenty-foot screening, right? So that's why I'm kinda, you know, we can only have a six-foot fence. I think requiring, you know, that uh plantings, I mean, I mean, in some cases, that could be insult to injury. You know, they just put an ADU there and now I've got a new line of trees growing up blocking my light further, you know? I just, it it's not obvious, you know, I I I would wanna, I would just wanna understand, like, what exactly are we talking about when we say screening? And and what does it mean if we require it in all cases?
Uh, this is a suggestion made by one of our RDRC members. So staff, um you know, it was, it came through in written form, so we didn't really have a discussion to talk about all of those ideas. Um, and if it's causing, you know, some concern, you know, um it's certainly something that we don't have to include in there, but given um. I I think the language, correct me if I'm wrong, and we have the actual language um.
Yes, packet page twenty-four G.
Twenty-four G. Thank you. But um, uh, what was the proposal? I'm, I guess, so Judy, what packet page? Let's see.
I guess the question is whether you wanna to provide screening of the structure or privacy because you could have the privacy windows or the high cells with no plantings there and and be maintaining the neighbor's privacy, but not necessarily minimizing the mass of the structure.
Well, the comment, I wanted to go back to the comment. Um, it was um.
So um clarify that when ingress egress make these avoid unavoidable that privacy screening will be required for both ADUs and GUs. That was sort of the summary of the comment.
It's, I think it's on packet page two forty-eight.
That's correct. So the, so I don't have the context. This is just a note. I guess it had to do where ingress and egress. I guess it's the ingress and egress, Andrea, does it sound right on the side and rear property lines? I think what we were trying to do is encourage um the entrances to kind of be on the interior rather than right up against the side property line, you know, where you're only four feet away. But in cases where that's unavoidable, um the suggestion is to require privacy screening. But again, the commission makes a good point. If you only have four feet anyway, then how are you gonna get that in there?
And it it might not be allowed to if there's only, you know, uh, if there's egress requirements, building might not allow it either next to stairs or something like that.
I remember we we talked about this at our study session about if it if it was a second-story ADU and there were exterior stairs right near the right four feet from the wall that you would have clom clom clom, you know, all this noise going up and down the steps and could we reroute the steps to the interior as much as possible to eliminate noise?
Well, I think we, uh, in the code, right, Andrea, where we talk about access?
Uh, we say that they will not be allowed except as needed to allow in ingress and egress. Um, so maybe it could be further clarified to say, you know, when the, when that's the only method of ingress and egress.
So section G says balconies, decks and open stair landings shall not face beside property lines except as needed to allow ingress and egress. And that's um, and that's what the comment was referring to. Comment was saying maybe clarify that when ingress and egress make these unavoidable, that privacy screenings will be required.
And this is packet page twenty-two, so Judy?
Um, no, this is, this is from the original uh PDF that that Eugene um commented on. So this, this is just something that's saved in in the file, um planning.
I I just don't know what privacy screening is if we're talking about a second floor, you know, staircase. I mean, I just don't know what that is. A big tree? I mean.
Well, I I think, you know, if we look at the language that we have, and I'll just direct your attention to beginning with um packet page twenty-two, letter G. And this is under junior accessory dwelling units. So for junior accessory dwelling units that have balconies, decks or open stair landings, we're saying that we don't want them to face these balconies to be facing, you know, the side property lines. The only time they can is for ingress and egress. So we're not encouraging, you know, a balcony or a deck of a of a of a Jdu to face their neighbors. We want them to face inwards, but where they can't, it's only to get into the Jdu for ingress and egress. So I think it addresses privacy.
Yeah, I agree with that. I I think the real concern is the privacy. And we're talking, and and I have real concerns about a two-story ADU right on the property line. So all we've provided here is windows within five feet. So you can be five feet and not obscure your windows. I don't like that. I actually think if you're towards the the edge of your property and you've got a second floor, um, and and maybe we need to say that second floor, but I would say windows within ten feet of the property line shall be obscured or have high so have high sills. Now, I guess I don't care on the first floor because the neighbor can put a fence up. So I would say second floor windows within ten feet of the property line shall be obscured or have high sills to maximize privacy for neighbors.
And just to orient the rest of the commission on this, um I believe you're referring to packet page twenty-four, letter G.
That's correct, yeah. Cause I I, I mean, I don't think we need to obscure windows on the first floor because the neighbor can have a fence or what have you. There probably is a fence there. Um, but I think second floor windows, I don't think it should just be within five feet. I mean, within five feet almost says five feet isn't, doesn't need to be obscured. So I, you know, other commissioners, please let me know what you think on this. But I I would say second floor windows within ten feet of the property line shall be obscured or have high sills to maximize privacy for neighbors.
I think that might be a little too limiting because the the window that you're obscuring obs- obscuring may not be looking into the neighbor's windows. You know, it's a kind of subjective.
Well, can it be within ten feet of the lot line and not actually be looking that way? I don't think so. I mean, you've got a minimum five foot, four foot setback, so um, you're only talking about six feet on that wall. Um, anyway, I, yeah, if if, uh, sure, I'm fine saying windows looking at the neighbor. Second floor windows facing the lot line within ten feet of the property line shall be obscured or have high sills.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Um, maybe a question for staff, have uh, if the primary residence um is at five feet and if it extends back the maximum setback in the lot, uh, how have we solved this in general? And and therefore where my head is, is why don't we just rep? We're, the only thing that's different or the one, the big thing that's different is not the side lot setback. It's the rear lot setback with these kinds of circumstances, I I'm thinking. So given that I think we've maybe addressed it before, can you remind us how we've tackled it?
It's really in design review. This could, this is a top topic at RDRC. And this is where, you know, it's really the design review. And then you use that as leverage to have them agree to obscure windows like that. Uh, but that's the problem. We don't get a design review of ADUs.
Exactly. I it, and it's really hard to get a highly specific rule like Commissioner Dugan is hoping for. Uh, we may, but it still might be useful to have a soft, a soft um guidance in there that uh where where possible and appropriate uh screening and configuration to maximize privacy, uh, something like that to, I mean, it it can be a lever to 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 kind of help uh th- these things a lot. It's in the gray area, but um it can, I think it can be useful uh with in a lot of cases where where people are gonna be reasonable.
I like providing guidance like that, uh, David, but wa- was there a concern about um requiring it within ten feet of the lot line if it's facing the neighbor on the second floor?
Well, Commissioner Bradley mentioned, uh, you know, some, you know, that it's hard to be that absolute uh, cause it may depend on what the, what what's on the other side of the uh of the lot line. Um, but um. Yeah, it's not a, not an easy answer here.
And those obscured windows, so you, on a hot day when it's ninety-five degrees, guessing there's no even in-window air conditioning units in the, in this box of a house. So therefore, in order to cool down, they're gonna have probably every window in the place open.
So they're not obscure when they're open?
I don't think they're going to be obscured all the time.
Yeah, good point.
Well, I don't think we've ever said obscure windows can't open. I don't think we've ever said that.
No, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I I'm just saying the reality is they'll probably be open.
Yeah.
I think this is one of the cases we have to use some more subjective and
Yeah.
uh, open suggestion uh that privacy is a concern without getting too specific which windows are obscure and unavoidable or whatever.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I honestly, I don't see a second floor window within ten feet of the lot line. That's gonna do anything but piss people off. And I think it's a valid privacy concern to want that obscured. If I'm on RDRC and that's before me, I would require those to be obscured every single time. And we're not gonna get that look on these. And, you know, so I, I, you know.
It it comes up even with first floor. Uh, anybody who builds a second floor, the next door neighbor is knowing that they'll be able to look down in their yard. And that's, you know, you can't make everybody happy, unfortunately.
We can start with tha- that a rule like that and then if somebody's looking out over a hill, so off a hillside and there's no neighbor, they can always ask for an exception. I mean, I, you know, I suppose, we can, it's not like, so um. We can set it up that way.
The RDRC, we could massage it, but uh they don't have to go there.
That's right. That's the, you know, we're losing a valuable tool with the fast turnaround time. And uh, and frankly, they wanna ease, they don't want us to be using um, using these sorts of rules as an impediment to the um construction of ADUs. But um, but but some language, uh, you know, Lisa was also saying that that can be useful to have um, have language encouraging.
Um, through the chair.
The staff wordsmith it for us.
Yes, that would be good. I think that would be good.
Yeah, taking uh Chair John's uh idea. And it do.
Through the chair. If I, I think Andrea and I maybe can provide some clarification. So on packet page twenty-four, under balconies and openings, that certainly falls within accessory dwelling unit. Um. But that's for accessory dwelling units that are not above garages. And I think what I heard the commission concerned about is when you have an ADU that's above a garage and close to the um rear and side yard setbacks that can now be as close as four feet. Um.
Oh, Lisa, sorry to to interrupt. If I could clarify, the accessory dwelling unit section on page twenty-two applies to all accessory dwelling units. Um, and then on page twenty-four, number five, additional standards, development standards for units above the garage are standards on top of the the ones listed above. So they're ones that are specific only to garages, but they do not exclude the pre- the previous requirements as well.
I think we should make that clar- clarify that in the code.
That could be something like in addition to the standards above.
Yeah, okay, section four, just to make sure that everything in section four A through H also applies
Yeah.
to ADUs above garages.
Oh, yeah.
That would, I think that clarified this whole discussion.
Okay. Um, and but I'm, did we have consensus on obscuring second floor windows within ten feet facing neighbors?
If we can get that in there, that would address one of the biggest concerns our community is gonna have about this. Is the privacy. I, we can't, we can't avoid the massing uh, massing problem. But we could, the privacy, the imposition on privacy, you know, this would help address it. I'm just looking for a way to try to um help address what will undoubtedly be a concern.
Yeah, I um, I will su- support the idea. I guess um, you know, if you were gonna be uh have lots of houses with second floor windows that run way back in the lot, and I think, you know, the key point uh that you've you've shared is that we don't have RDRC uh purview here. Um, and, you know, requiring everyone to be obscured feel within ten feet just feels strong.
That's fair. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I think too.
Four feet didn't seem like enough, so I don't want eight feet, you know, does anyone have?
It was five feet. It's currently five feet, right?
No, it's uh within five feet, so five feet wouldn't, wouldn't be required. But, you know, four feet eleven inches would.
Yes.
And I don't know, just picture a second floor thing going up five feet from your lot line with big windows looking down on you. You're not gonna like it.
No, I won't. And, you know, even more difficult because of state law, um, people will put it four feet because it's allowed, right? So there, we know.
And then no, ask, ask, ask for an exception and make it three feet.
I mean, to be clear, you've got two or three other sides to this thing that look into your yard. And you can put all your picture windows there and get all the light you need. You can put skylights in. You can make this and and obscure windows transmit light. But if you're within, I I I like the ten feet, but I, you know, I'm not, you know, if there's, if there's consensus on another number, great. But I just think if it's close to your lot line and you're looming over your neighbor's second floor, I think those windows should be obscure or have a high sill. I just, I do. I think that's a major concern that people are really not gonna like it when their neighbor puts a second floor ADU that stares right in their backyard. I I just, you know, and I think it's perfectly reasonable to ask them to get their views and and and, you know, sense of openness by looking into their own yard, not their neighbor's yard. I think that's a perfectly fine architectural standard to require if someone's putting up a twenty-foot hulking thing on a four-foot lot line, you know?
And through the chair, if I may, just to add some context to this conversation in case that it helps the commission. And Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, but in um the prior code, there used to be a requirement whereby whenever um an ADU had windows or or openings, um, it it had to be, ha- it had to have, the ADU would have to have an additional setback, which I believe was ten feet. Does that, is that ring a bell, Andrea?
It's correct. And if you wanted to do something less than that. It's correct, and if you wanted to do something less than that, you actually had to go to public hearing.
So, so there is a precedent i- in terms of a benchmark, ten feet, we used to have it, but now the state has precluded us and said we have to allow four feet. But then it it doesn't say that we further have to allow, you know, the windows all along those four foot setbacks.
So the section G, where it says windows within five feet of the property line shall be obscured or have high sills to maximize privacy, we can change that number five to some other number and ten, there's precedent for. Um or we could choose something in between. It's kind of an incentive to uh to not go up to the four foot uh maximum. On the other hand, if you're forcing them to go to ten foot, then maybe they'll say, you know, not take the bait. I was thinking something, something less than ten, but more than five, but but uh there is some value to that ten foot pres- maybe there's value to that ten foot precedent.
I I I think of ten feet because, you know, ten feet at least is room to do something that's yours underneath it, that you might wanna be able to look at. Anything like eight feet, nine feet, I mean, there's nothing useful under there anyways. And so really, all you're looking out that window to do is to look into your neighbor's
Yeah.
place. I don't know what else you're looking out that window for. It's not to watch your own kid or anything. Um so um but the only other, so I'm proposing ten feet. I can live with another number if you guys are more comfortable with something else. But I I think second floor, I think we're talking about second floor windows. I don't think a first floor window is a concern. You can look out all your first floor windows because you're probably looking at your neighbor's fence.
Oh, I am, most people are concerned. They don't want anybody, neighbors, looking in any of their windows.
Oh, I mean, you can certainly add obscure windows if you want. We're just saying you have to do it if it's on the second floor looking over the fence in your neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
I would support a ten, ten foot, ten foot on the second floor. And maybe you could even keep the five-foot rule for the, for the ground level. I I guess the way it's written now, the five-foot rule obscuring at five foot applies for ground floor. So we don't necessarily have to weaken that part of it, but we could strengthen it by saying on the second floor, it's ten feet.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, is it really a privacy concern on the first floor? Maybe I'm not understanding that correctly.
Well, some people are concerned. They, they just don't want anybody looking in anything.
No, Don, not, not someone looking in. This is, we're requiring obscure so you can't look out at your neighbor. You know, that's us requiring it. You can obscure any window you ever want. So if you're concerned about your privacy, you can absolutely obscure it. We're talking about, can you look out? And I just, I mean, I, like, I'm not aware of any lot line without a fence in this city, honestly. Um but, but hey, I'm, I'm sure.
I had a question about notification. Do any of these projects, do the neighbors get notified at all, or because these ADUs don't go through RDRC or any committee, that the neighbors are not notified and all of a sudden they look out their window and four feet away, um is something being constructed or is, do immediate neighbors get a notice?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Garvey, you are correct. There is no public notice requirement. Public notices are only required for projects that go to hearing.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're permitted by right, provided beneath the standards of the code, and they just need to get a building permit.
Could we ask that they be, that people be noticed?
Well, if people are noticed, then they'll want to comment, and if they, then there isn't really a, a process to um respond in a meaningful way to those comments because it's a streamlined process.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Uh is it, is it worth it? I know the state says we have to do it, but uh is look at the impacts of that uh when, when people are surprised when in the morning a prefab appears next door to them and they had no concern, known. You know, unless the, the person that's building it is concerned about their neighbors and notifies them themselves before it happens, but I, I just see another pitfall looming up.
Yeah, it's definitely a pitfall and, you know, the, but I agree. I don't think you can notice a project if there's no avenue to comment on it or or really have any impact on it. I mean, it's like, you know, it's, it's been preempted by the state.
It's really easy for people in Sacramento to pass laws governing how people live in their local communities. We're not like Sacramento, we're not like San Francisco or San Jose, or even Belmont or Redwood City. And one size doesn't fit all, and they'll find that out, but they don't, they don't know it yet.
Yeah.
And redwood ten feet.
All right. Releasing the uh um, the ten feet gives us one opportunity.
Yeah, I, I do think they'll be more upset if this thing goes in without notice and they're now staring, getting their backyard stared into.
I does the state law, the new state laws say we can't notify people, even if there's no meeting or public hearing? That we can't notify people next door that there's gonna be a project later? I think we should look into that.
Through the chair, um we can't require it because it's not otherwise required, but we can certainly encourage it. That may not be enough, but we can certainly, as part of the process, encourage um property owners to, to, you know, you know, adopt a friendly neighborhood policy and 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 make a recommendation and maybe even provide a template that they can use to notify their neighbors, so it's very easy for them to do so, rather than having to draft something up and 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 um and uh figure out what to say. I mean, staff could facilitate it, but we couldn't require it. We can say we think it's a good idea to, here's, here's a template you can use, drop this off
Yeah.
your, to your immediate neighbors, but we, we, we can't make it a requirement. But they can certainly, we can certainly help them and bridge it.
Yeah, I hear you, Don. It's, it's, you know, it is uh disappointing that we get preempted in these important ways. Um I hear you, and there wo- there very well might be some blowback and we're a lot closer to the people who are gonna be upset than the folks in Sacramento, and uh, yeah, that's the way of the state mandate.
I'm kinda thankful I live in a condo. I don't have, although I think the, the state legislation says you can build an ADU in your condo.
Yeah.
And uh that's ridiculous.
The uh, all right, uh well, I think I've heard three of us supportive of a s- uh requirement that second floor windows within ten feet of a property line facing a neighbor shall be obscured or have high sills.
I will support that. Yeah, I like that idea.
Found me already, yeah.
Okay, good. I think we got that one. Um, anything else we're thinking about, guys? I had one question that half mile from a bus stop thing, that is a little troublesome. Is that as the crow flies or is that half mile to walk to a bus stop?
It's within walking distance.
Oh, so like, it's not, so you don't draw a half-mile circle around every bus stop? You calculate if it's a half-mile along sidewalks to get there?
Right, it has to be by walking distance. That's one of the clarifications um I believe the state made for twenty-twenty.
Okay. And then that means, and I'm sorry, that means no additional parking is required. Is that correct?
Correct, there would be no additional parking required for that ADU that's within one-half mile walking distance.
Okay. Yeah. That is kind of just an odd thing, right? Because, I mean, almost everyone who lives in the Bay Area is gonna have a car, so it's not obvious to me being close to a bus stop really means someone's not gonna have a car. I haven't met that person yet, and I've lived here quite a while. Um the uh um and by allowing it that way, it basically means anyone who just happens to be on the wrong side of Alameda um has to provide parking, and they're the ones with a lot more street parking available. It's the tighter neighborhoods that are close to all the bus stops that actually don't have enough street parking. So that whole thing is kinda perverse. I don't know. Do we really, do we wanna just embrace that and just not require this parking for anybody so that all of our residents are treated fairly on this issue?
Well, I think that requirement came from the law, right?
Well, we're required within the bus stop. I'm saying, why be that arbitrary? Because the guys near the bus stops are the ones without enough street parking, but we can't solve that problem. So why do we wanna, you know, shouldn't we treat all of our residents the same way then and just not require that additional parking space? That further embraces ADUs, lifts that requirement and, you know, I don't know, most neighborhoods up in the hills have more street parking available than something off of Laurel.
Yeah, we're allowed to be less stringent, I s- I guess, but uh
Yeah.
but there may be some streets where parking is tight, like winding way or, I mean, so it's not across the board.
Exactly.
There would be some, it impact in some areas, but but it's a valid point.
It just seems really arbitrary to, you know, just go with that bus stop rule.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna encourage uh so much street parking on the winding hilly roads up here to make it look like what's happening in, in White Hills, which is a beautiful neighborhood, but it's just filled with cars and trucks and SUVs and pickups uh curb to curb all the time.
Well, I I'm just wondering how many ADUs are we gonna lose? I mean, so like, you take your average resident with a two-car garage, can they add an ADU? I don't even know the answer to that. Do they have to what? They have to carve up their front yard now for a third parking space, or they can't have an ADU?
I can answer that if, so if someone were to convert their garage, they would not have to require replacement parking for the garage itself? So then theoretically, their ADU parking space could be on the driveway?
I see, but then the, the, the single-family home still requires that parking, right?
Not if, not if the garage is converted.
But what if it's not a garage conversion? What, what does that mean?
Then yes, it does. Yes, it does require parking for the main residence.
Okay, but does that, do you get to count two in your garage and two in your driveway?
You can.
You can, so the average normal driveway with two-car garage actually has four parking spaces.
Right, so the state law allows you to allow quote-unquote flexibility in parking. So however that is, whether it's in your driveway or your front um setback, things like that, so that, that's the one exception uh that state law does allow.
I see, so if I'm doing an eighty, so if I have a two-car garage and a two-car driveway, um and I wanna do an ADU, but I'm not near a bus stop, I do not have to add a third slip somewhere on my property. That's correct?
Uh unless for some reason you were in a hillside and your garage was right up against the property line, so you don't have the normal driveway depth.
Okay.
That someone would have normally.
But as long as you have a normal, as long as your driveway can hold cars like most can, you can do an ADU without building another driveway somewhere.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Although the reality is, with many of the two-car garages in San Carlos, you can't actually get two vehicles in many of those garages because they're just a little tight. But I guess.
And they're filled with storage boxes, at least mine is.
Yeah.
So I get one car in and
Well, we can't, we can't uh legislate how people use their garages, but I just wanna make sure we don't make a rule that stops a bunch of ADUs because there's nowhere to put a third driveway, so it sounds like it's not an issue. So I'm, 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 I don't think we need to do anything else unless I'm missing something on that.
I agree. I think the way it's written, the way it is now is fine.
Okay, thank you. Then my, the only thing else on my list was uh, are we fine with twenty-foot flat roofs? Or do we wanna allow those to be gabled in some way? The only thought that occurred to me was put the height restriction on like the second floor ceiling, not on, you know, the top of the gable, but, you know, I don't know. Maybe it is just better to just say twenty feet and it's as less looming into the neighbors. Uh, flat roofs are pretty ugly and might not match the house, but at least it'll only be twenty feet. So I don't, I, you know, I'm just throwing it out there as something I felt like we should talk about, but I don't feel it's
Right. I would say, my opinion is that um I hate to relinquish any opportunity to keep the massing um limited. And functionally, twenty feet is plenty for the space and um and so why should we allow a larger mass uh when that's gonna be one of the big concerns?
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, I, the only thought would be a flat roof is so darn ugly.
I, I hear you. I'm just trying to balance the um
Yeah.
the uh, the massing, uh it's a trade-off uh between, between the aesthetics and the massing and um
Yeah.
I kinda wanna land on the limiting the massing.
It doesn't have to be ugly if it's a Spanish house or, or a modern house that can work. Look, look fine.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty feet gives quite a bit of, quite a bit of room to do stuff.
Okay. All right, that was my list. Does anyone else have any concerns remaining?
Well, I'd like to add to the prior comments that uh from some other commissioners that the staff did a really nice job taking the um the feedback from the our original study session and the answering, researching and answering those issues in the appendix of this um of our document tonight. It's very impressive.
I would echo that. Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, this is important uh, for an addition to our code. I think this will go a long way. And by the way, at the uh the planning commissioner conference I was at in Sacramento, um we learned that uh ADUs, just by their very nature, count as affordable housing and uh help satisfy, what is, what is that, Lisa? The, the renew um requirements or the, however that acronym is pronounced.
That is, that is correct. Um second dwelling units or accessory dwelling units do count towards the regional housing needs allocation. The re-
Which is huge. That's, we reviewed that a couple months ago, if you recall, and we were, you know, we had built a lot of housing, but we weren't meeting those requirements at all. ADUs are a very real tool to meet those, and they, they don't have to be in the Affordable Housing Program. Just the fact that they're eight hundred square feet and otherwise small means they qualify as affordable housing. They just are more affordable and we get credit for that. Um so we can be uh pleased uh that this is a step in the right direction to helping um provide more housing uh in San Carlos.
Um, let me make sure I'm on. When we were together last and we talked about um an item that staff put in the pack regarding what are the incentives that might be available for municipalities to encourage these uh ADUs to be available for and uh to and used for below-market rate tenants. Um so thank you for the feedback, uh and I think Lisa Pars, you commented that uh that was part of the housing element and not of zoning, so understood. I guess um I'm not sure how it's appropriate in as we convey I'm not sure how it's appropriate in as we convey this proposed uh legislation or proposed zoning change to city council, but I would uh for my part encourage them to think broadly about how they could participate with other cities or the county to uh develop uh a fund or participate in a fund similar to some that were encouraged where um there might be low-interest loans or forgivable grants in exchange for a deed-restricted below-market rate rent for a period of time. It just seems in keeping with what it is, uh, we're trying to do to encourage access to below-market rate units here in San Carlos.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. I, I would love to see something. Um, I remember at that uh first meeting we had about this, um, I think uh city manager Jeff had suggested maybe even a some kind of low-interest loan program from the city to help subsidize these. I, I, you know, firstly, I would support that. So um, I don't think anything we're doing here precludes any of that. Um, and hopefully that, that makes its way onto our agenda at some point.
Um, this is Judy again. Quick comment on that. So um, there was an accessory dwelling unit, second dwelling unit um conference last year and um they mentioned that this energy credit union actually offers ADU construction loans, so that's one of the first in our county to, to do a specifically ADU construction loan, so that might be a good resource for applicants.
Oh, that's terrific. That's good to know. Yeah, anything we can do to streamline this process, have pre-approved uh uh architecture already done for folks, uh pick one of eight, it's already approved kind of thing. Um, you know, uh partnerships with banks to make it easy for people to apply, you know, I think ADUs are you know, a long way to help ease, ease uh the housing crisis with um you know, if not minimal impacts, at least distributed impacts. It's like small units going up around town. It's not some seventy-two-foot uh condo uh unit, so um I think ADUs are uh, are, are pretty cool. And I like the ones that look like they fell out of Dwell Magazine personally. Alright.
I move that the uh planning commission adopt a resolution and as uh amended with comments from the planning commission this evening, recommending that city council introduce an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code Section eighteen dot twenty-three dot two-ten, second dwelling units in sections eighteen dot oh-four, eighteen dot oh-five, eighteen dot fifteen, eighteen dot sixteen, eighteen dot nineteen, eighteen dot twenty, eighteen dot twenty-four dot two-thirty and eighteen dot forty of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
Terrific. And Lisa, do you feel the need to reiterate the changes we submitted or you have that or what, what's the proper procedure?
I think, I know it's getting late, but I, I feel that it's pretty important given the, the time you put into this to just repeat these real quickly.
Sure.
And I, and I have them written down. Um, the first amendment that you wanted us to make was to make it absolutely clear that eight hundred, eight hundred square feet um would be excluded from MFA or lot coverage. So there was that discussion we had way back when about how much counts for this and that, and you just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
I agree.
Would be part of the modifications. Um, you also, the commission also wanted to make it clear that JDUs are not excluded from MFA and lot coverage. The only exception being up to one hundred and fifty feet to allow ingress egress. The commission also wanted to clarify under the definitions of um an ADU and JDU that at minimum they should have a shower, sink and toilet or at least a shower, sink and toilet.
Yes.
For removing of the term tub. Um, under the same definition for eight, well, for ADU, um to add in language referring uh to the cooktop and range that it be built in and also a full-size or standard-sized refrigerator as well as a food preparation and storage counter.
Yes.
And then for JDUs, um Summer Lily, a, a, a built-in um cooking facility, uh, excuse me, a built-in cooktop or range and a refrigerator as well as a food preparation counter.
There was one more thing where entrance needs to be external for both.
Yeah, that was the next thing I've got here. So moving on, I have um that for both of these, that the entrance needs to be external for JDUs and ADUs, just making that uh clarified. Um, with the architectural compatibility, we talked about um architectural compatibility um referring to the same or complementary elements of architectural style, material colors. So same or complementary elements. I believe the commission chose not to address privacy screening. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're leaning on the um the, the balcony, uh staircases, what have you, are only for ingress egress, nothing else.
That is correct, yes. Um, and then we are also going to clarify that the standards for accessory dwelling units, uh beginning on packet page twenty-two under subsection four. Um, the subsections for A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H also apply to the standards for ADUs above garages. So again, this is just clarifying that both of those would be required for all ADUs. Um, also the amendment to require that um windows within ten feet of the property line be obscured.
Uh, second-floor windows.
The second-floor windows.
Yeah, obscure or have high sills to maximize privacy for neighbors.
Great. And that's all that I have are those ten amendments.
That was complete. Thank you very much.
Good. I'm glad I read them. Thank you.
Uh, we have a, a motion. Uh, we need a second, I believe.
I, I second that motion.
Uh, terrific. We have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, but I would ask that the minutes reflect that I grieve the loss of a century-old law supported by the United States Supreme Court that gives local cities uh planning and zoning authority. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair Acapone?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
Yes. Alright, uh, thank you, everyone. That was uh a lot of work and uh a lot of work from staff and, and a lot of work this evening. And uh, I think this is a good um addition uh for ADUs in San Carlos. Um, thank you. Uh, moving on, agenda item seven, reports correspondence and general information. Uh, Lisa, do you have any uh reports this evening?
Uh, yes, I have an announcement to make and I believe Andrea has one as well. So reports on recent city council actions. Um, a week ago on Monday, the city council authorized the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with a professional planning firm known as MIG or MIG. And this is the firm um that has been selected to assist staff in the community development department to prepare a focused general plan update, an update consisting of um updates to three specific elements of the general plan, elements or chapters. The first is land use. Second is housing and the third is the safety element. And you may recall that the city council has had over the past couple of years, one of its strategic object, objectives to look at um regular, regulations and standards related to, relating to housing and how we can um look at our standards to meet our housing needs. So one of the things that we have upcoming anyway is the need um by the state to prepare an updated housing element. We have our new RENA numbers coming in uh later this year. Um, we know we're gonna need to do um, kind of roll up our sleeves and do a little bit of a, a lot, a bit of a heavier lift when it comes to meeting the expected RENA allocation, which is anywhere between two to three times higher than the last cycle. Uh, so we have a lot of work in that regard and we're gonna need um some help to do that. So we um got authorization from the council and we're soon, soon going to be kicking off that effort. This commission will um with study sessions coming forward to the commission when we're ready to do so, but a large uh part of the initial work will be to analyze our existing regulations, look at our land use, look at our zoning, see where we can accommodate more housing and of course involving the public. So as soon as we get more details on how we're going to roll out that plan, we'll be sure to engage the commission. Um, this is a big project, so you'll be hearing a lot about that. If you have any questions of staff at all, um please reach out to me. And I can, and I can be cer- certainly happy to meet with you. Um, not a problem there. So I just wanted to let you know that that's happening and this is even though we're sort of in, you know, these different times that we are at um with the pandemic, we're going to be looking at a lot of um very exciting ways to engage the public. Recognizing we'll probably continue to need to um still have virtual engagement. But we'll be ready for some in-person if and when that's appropriate. Uh, so that is my announcement. And then I think um Andrea, did you have any um details on construction hours?
Yes, so one other update, uh, city council at their last meeting adopted new construction hours under the emergency order. And those new hours are eight to five, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday and no construction allowed on Sundays or holidays.
And that concludes our reports from the council.
Yeah, thank you. Um, commissioners, any comments or reports?
Uh, just a quick question. Congratulations uh on picking MIG. They're an excellent firm. And um for these three studies and part of the general plan, uh, when do they start and when are they uh are you proposing they finish those a year, two years or three years?
Yes, I can answer that really quickly. Um, well, the document is certainly being circulated right now for signatures. As soon as we get all those signatures on the document, we will be ready to go. So we um will kick off the project um this month. We're in June, June's, June first is today. I think it's still today. It's not June second yet. A little while, a little bit. But we will kick off the project this, this month where staff will be meeting with them and really going through the scope of work and and, and looking at how we're gonna roll out the public participation plan. And then um it is a requirement by state law that we adopt our housing element by January twenty-twenty-three. So these um we're, 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 we're on target. Our target is to meet that requirement. So this project should wrap up at the end of um twenty-twenty-two. Um, probably in the fall, taking this forward or, or before to the planning commission and then on to the city council. And then the housing element goes to the state for certification thereafter. So definitely before January twenty-twenty-three.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you uh for that, uh Lisa. And I, I would just, you know, uh, I don't think any of us have really seen that process or uh, you know, we certainly, I haven't lived it. Um and, and I don't know how long it'll take to firm up, but in, in one of our future meetings, you know, like within, you know, two or three months, if, if you could just lay out for us like what we can expect, you know, like what does that process look like? Um where uh, where will our input be needed? Uh, how can we uh participate to hear the community's input and all that good stuff? Um, I, it'd just be helpful to get, get, get a good overview of that and and I'll, you know, and I, I actually think some aspects of that probably should be done before uh twenty-twenty-three, uh specifically with regard to our planning around um what's gonna happen over in East San Carlos. Uh, we've had uh discussions on that and whether we really want two million square feet of office to show up over there. Um, so um, you know, I, for one, would uh uh like to move a little faster than twenty-twenty-three. That's my single uh voice in this, but I know it's such a comprehensive project and understanding that better will, will help me to appreciate what, what all goes into that.
And, and we're, we're, we, we understand those concerns and um that analysis we hope to have done by the end of this year. Basically, really looking at our vacant and underutilized sites, looking to see whether we are going to be able to accommodate the housing with the um with the zoning that we have already in place that allows residential, including what might need to be changed in those zoning designations. So we understand um that's a concern, you know, of, of both. I've heard this on the commission and the council has some of the council members have expressed that as well. So we understand that and we're gonna get going on that and we hope to have a large part of that resolved by the end of this year.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I know it's quite a process. Um, will, will be interesting for sure. Um, so thank you for that. I'm glad you guys uh uh, and, and you've, and the hiring of this MIG firm and I know Andrea's new uh position. Uh, do you feel adequately staffed at this point in time or resourced to uh tackle this project, Lisa?
Uh, at this moment, yes. And if, and if I have any needs, Al and I certainly, you know, we usually will voice that and, and work towards getting our needs met, but we're in, we're in good shape.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Terrific. Um, and then, you know, I just, it's a question, I suppose. Um, I, I find myself at a bit of a disadvantage not having these um uh packets printed out. You know, this one was two hundred and fifty pages and there was just a lot, you know, I found myself wanting to flip around. Is it uh, uh, I mean, I can do it. I could even hit print on my own printer, I guess. Um, but would it be burdensome for us to be able to pick up packets again for future meetings? Like, what? I don't really know what your workflow is looking like at the city now and such.
That, that's not a problem and um please ask if, if there's anything that any of the commissioners need to do your review to be able to, you know, be on this different platform that we have here. Um, please let us know because we want to accommodate that. We, for example, Dawn requested a paper copy, so we, I think it was delivered to you, Dawn, if I recall.
Delivered it to my porch.
Because I'll, I'll have to double check, but I don't think the library is open and um
Yeah.
We're trying to avoid that if at all possible, but our, our full-time staff can certainly make accommodations to deliver those you know, in a package to your doorstep and you can, you just have it right there and we can certainly do that. So please let us know. If that's something that you would like, just send me an email and we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I'll size up the next package. You know, it'll probably be some I'll ask for and some I won't, you know. And uh
We could pick them up at the sheriff's station in the city hall there. Perhaps.
Yeah, that, that's another option.
Until the library opens. Again, hopefully we'll
If there's a pickup option, I'll, I'll make sure to let the commission know, but I'd want to just confirm that. You know, just following the protocol here.
Sure.
And I did thank Lori, but please remind, uh, thank her for me again for delivering it. I appreciate it.
We will. Thank you.
Alright, terrific. Um, correspondence, any correspondence?
No, no additional correspondence.
Terrific. Uh, any additional staff comments or updates on current projects?
So just a few updates of what's coming up next. Uh, at the next hearing on June fifteenth, we're anticipating a proposal to demo existing office and airplane hangars and rebuild both of those, and that's at six-five-five Skyway. Um, there is also at the next hearing, the election of the new chair, vice chair of the planning commission as well as the RDRC chair and the alternate chair for the RDRC. Uh, and then a few other items we have coming. Probably the meeting after that uh is a new mixed-use office and retail building on the nine-hundred block of Laurel. And uh also the two winding way homes should be coming back, the two remaining ones uh within the next month or so, we're anticipating. And then uh one last item, uh, I don't know if you'll remember nine-thirty Britain, uh, you approved it in December of twenty-eighteen. It's a building currently under construction on Britain between Old County and, uh, Industrial Road. It's, uh, incubator lab space. The developer has reached out. They are almost done with it and, uh, wanted to invite the commission, uh, once it's safe and, uh, you know, obviously following, um, no more than two commissioners, but invite you to tour the site, uh, to take a look, uh, because of the unique concept with these various incubator spaces for, for different labs. So, um, if you're interested in that, please let me know and we'll make sure to set that up. Uh, they, they should be done with construction by the end of June. Uh, so sometime this summer, but, uh, they're very excited to, to show the commissioners if you're, if you are interested.
Is this the, uh, MBC Bio Labs building?
It is, it is. It's the one that has kind of those yellow panels that's going up right now.
That's a good looking building. Yeah, I, I, I count me in for the tour. I'll email you offline.
I'd like to also.
Yeah, Andrea Mo is up for a field trip, so, uh, you can throw me on the list.
And me as well. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
That's everybody.
Two at a time.
Right.
Yes. Six feet apart.
Yes.
Yeah. That too.
All right. That was a nice update. Uh, thank you. And, uh, um, yeah, so I guess I didn't even realize that year went by fast. So, uh, uh, should we talk about, um, who's interested in what role or how does that usually play out, Lisa? Do we?
I think that sort of discussion would, uh, be something that you would have, um, when it's agendized at your next hearing. Um, you can certainly reach out to another commissioner, but you want to be careful of the Brown Act, right? You don't want to have the, um, you know, the telephone call, you know, but you can certainly talk with another commissioner if you like outside of the meeting, but, uh, otherwise the full discussion would, would take place during the, um, during the agendized item at your next hearing.
Okay, that makes sense.
Certainly if the, um, commissioners would like to share anything with staff and, um, um, you can certainly pass it on and we can put it in the packet if you like. I mean, you know, if there's, if there's something to that degree you would like to add, but otherwise it's typically, um, discussed informally at the, um, when, during the, um, the time that it's agendized.
Okay, very good.
Heard anything about, uh, the city hall opening up and you guys going back to work at the office and we have our commission meetings in the council chambers again.
At this time, no, we're still, um, working from home, um, as much as possible. Um, that has been, um, the direction we've been giving, given. However, I can share with you that the city has already, um, taken steps in preparation of an eventual opening. One of which is, um, providing, um, I guess they're called sneeze guards or, you know, these clear screens um, at the public counter, at all public counters. Um, so we have one installed at the development services counter. So you come up, there's like a clear glass pane um, with little openings where you can transfer plans back and forth, but there's definitely a guard between the public and staff. As well as, um, mandatory temperature readings. So we actually already purchased the equipment for that. And when city staff, um, walks in, um, one door, so there's really one area where we can walk in, um, we're immediately, you know, told to stop and go to this temperature reading and we just, we just stand in front of it. It kind of looks like we're taking a picture, but it, it's a, a, um, it's a non-physical reading or we don't need to touch anything, but it just reads our temperature. So we're required to do that and all of our cubicles are going to be modified with kind of like a similar screening um, device. So the city is already taking steps to do that, but, um, maybe what we can do is, um, put something together and update the commission at the next hearing on June fifteenth, I believe.
Right. As far as we know though, we'll be doing that virtual, uh, Zoom next meeting.
That's correct.
For both, uh, planning commission and the RDRC. Not to end the meeting on a bad note, but my wife told me she saw that, um, a jewelry store in San Carlos was broken into and looted last night, I believe. Anybody hear that? It's sad when it's so close to home. Sad enough anyway.
Yeah. I did hear about that. I guess you wonder when does a burglary turn into looting, but, um, anyway, I'm, I'm thankful. I don't think there was a riot in San Carlos, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, no. And I guess nobody was hurt. They probably did it at night. Anyway, times are tough, aren't they? But be safe, everybody. Thank you all for all your help in this. Good job, John, Lisa, Andrea.
Andrea, Lisa, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. This is, uh, we're in, we're deep into hour seven with your work this evening. No break.
Yeah. My wife comes up every hour and says, what's going on?
All right. Good meeting, everyone. Thank you so much. Uh, we stand adjourned. Good night.
Okay.
Night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.